Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors and the Carson City Board of Health to order. Today is Thursday, July 16, 2015. It is just 8:30 a.m. We're in a community center at the Sierra Room at 8:51 East Williams Street, and I believe it's also being streamed on the Internet, this meeting is. Okay? Could we have a roll call, Sue, for the record, please?
Good morning. Supervisor Aboud?
Yes.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Yes.
Supervisor Bagwell?
Yes.
Supervisor Sher?
Yes.
Mayor Crowell?
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Sue. Could we call our good friend, Father Chuck Durante of St. Teresa Aveilia Church to get us going? Morning. Father, how are you?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Give us some good words this morning.
I hope... Last month, Pope Francis put out an encyclical that's made a bit of a splash in the news and in many different faith traditions, so I thought I would use the concluding prayer of that encyclical, and then I've added a few words appropriate to the gathering this morning. So, as always, we...
Father, put on that red light there.
Oh, sure. I noticed the podium gone, so...
All right. That pick me up now?
Yeah, we'll just pick it up.
All right. So, let us pray. A prayer for our earth. O powerful God, you are present in the whole universe and in the smallest of your creatures. You embrace with your tenderness all that exists. Pour out upon us the power of your love, that we may protect life and beauty. Fill us with peace, that we may live as brothers and sisters, harming no one. O God of the poor, help us to rescue the abandoned and forgotten of this earth, so precious in your eyes. Bring healing to our lives, that we may protect the world and not prey on it, that we may sow beauty, not pollution and destruction. Touch the hearts of those who look only for gain at the expense of the poor and of the earth. Teach us to discover the worth of each thing, to be filled with awe and contemplation, to recognize that we are profoundly united with every creature as we journey towards your infinite light. We thank you for being with us each day. Encourage us, we pray, in our struggle for justice and love and peace. And as we gather this day with this board coming together, we ask you to send forth upon all of us, holy God, your Spirit of wisdom and knowledge, of counsel and courage, of deliberation and mutual respect for all people. Through this Holy Spirit, guide and direct our Board of Supervisors and all who will come before them today to speak true and just statements and to make good and wise decisions for this great community of Carson City, Nevada. Help us always to be people of gratitude and to use the gifts you have granted us for the good of all. We make this prayer as your holy and humble people. Amen.
Amen.
My pleasure. Can we call on Mr. Rob Dendy to please pledge a religion?
Please come in and pledge.
Hang on a minute. You can do it. As many of you know, this is Nick Providence's last meeting. He's retiring. And on behalf of all of us, Nick, I want you to lead the pledge because we honor and respect you for what you've done for our community and for what you've done to make it a better place financially and every other way. So, Nick, thanks, and now you can lead us in the pledge. Or would you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. All right. We'll now move on to item number five. This is public comment. This is the time to comment on any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of this body or... And we take public comment usually during the agendas we go through it and at the end. Mr. Roder, you want to have public comment? Come on up.
Good morning, Mayor, Board. I'll be real quick. If you haven't looked at the city's webpage or followed the city's Facebook, July 23rd, next Thursday, from 11:30 to 1:00 and 5:30 to 7:00, we're having public meetings regarding our stormwater program. We've had a lot of comments from the storms last summer, even this summer, and giving a little background, a little history, a little input. Come ask questions and learn a little bit about that. Ormsby Room at the Sheriff's Office, 911 East Musser.
Thank you, Danny. Who do we have next?
I'm Sharon Davidson.
Good morning, Sharon. How are you?
Good, and you?
Thank you.
Here representing Grassroots Action Network, DBA Label GMO Nevada, or 501(c)(4), we're a state and local group with multiple affiliations advocating for GMO labeling and against the use of dangerous pesticides. We read Carson City's strategic plan, which refers to quality of life issues. We feel that that should include health and wellness for all of its citizens. First, we wish to acknowledge Carson's Parks Department for initiating a limited pilot program to examine non-toxic weed abatement in one park. We're here today to outline what we see as limitations to this approach and to ask for your consideration for a larger program. We've been following and have, in fact, received training from the city of Richmond, who adopted a 12-month citywide ban on pesticide use to clarify issues that arose from their existing IPM system. They did this in February of this year, even before the World Health Organization declared glyphosate a probable carcinogen. Roundup's the most commonly pesticide, most common pesticide used in the world today. 300 million pounds in the United States each year alone. Surely lots of it is used in this city, although the Parks Department wasn't sure exactly how much. Richmond already had a fairly rigid integrated pest management standard before passing this resolution, because even a good IPM allows for abuses or workaround when a problem comes up. They felt the need for a stronger ordinance. So here, we're advocating for this same kind of ordinance that will be airtight. No bringing out the sprayers when things get tough. Always use organic methods. This is what we do. We trial natural methods, make assessments, determine costs, and go forward even after our trial. In the meantime, we haven't harmed the environment, threatened any children, any birds, any beneficial insects, any fish or frogs. We haven't contaminated any soil or water or a healthy place to live with a high quality of life. Richmond's resolution also asks for an educational component to help teach residents about the dangers of chemicals. There's a media outreach requirement, including a requirement for signs and flyers. There's a task force for evaluation and for public opinion. They were required to safely discard all of their poisons, and they're not allowed to procure more. In studies done in other locales implementing a non-toxic IPM, despite an initial uptick in costs, cities then enjoy long-term savings and long-term health benefits. We encourage Carson City to take a bold step and make the statement to your constituents that you won't stand for environmental toxicity or compromised health for the sake of convenience or status quo. Thank you for allowing me to speak. We've delivered copies, as required, to all of you, which includes a copy of Richmond's resolution. Our group has decades of collective resources in these areas, and please feel free to look for us for information and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Okay. Who's next?
John Davidson, also representing Grassroots Action Network. We're an advocacy group for a GMO-free and pesticide-free environment. I want to start with a quote from the Midwest Pesticide...
You may take more time you need, but try and not be duplicative, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Thanks. Quote from Midwest Pesticide Action Center. "It typically takes years for chronic disease and illness to show up in humans, and regulatory action frequently occurs after the damage has already been done. Many pesticides that were once widely used, such as DDT and Diazenon, were banned only after decades of environmental exposure revealed their toxic effects on human health, wildlife, and ecosystems. The building of soil structure and the conversion from a chemical base to an organic, non-pesticide-based landscape system takes time, and given the health dangers associated with pesticide use, we don't have the luxury of more time. It took 10 years after the publication of Rachel Carson's Silent Spring in 1962 to finally ban DDT from use. Currently, 5.4 million Americans suffer from Alzheimer's disease, and in a recently published research in the Journal of the American Medical Association, virtually all the sufferers studied had elevated levels of DDT in their blood. Over 40 years after DDT was banned, glyphosate, the most widely used chemical pesticide, is considered significantly more toxic than DDT. Do we really want to wait 40 more years to discover the harms? Organic-based IPMs used in San Francisco, Chicago, New York, Montgomery County, Maryland, and Richmond, California have all shown significant cost reductions for the communities while building soil integrity, a healthier environment, and a sustainable system of pest management. The time for a citywide ban on chemical pesticide use is now. We have the knowledge, the resources, the expert assistance needed to implement a more sustainable approach. Now all we need is the will. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you. Cheryl. Good morning.
Good morning, sir. I'm here this morning... By the way, it's Carol Howell. I am actually representing the Northern Sierra Ladies Gun Club. I'm here this morning to introduce the board to a fundraiser. Four of the gun clubs that utilize the Carson City Gun Range have come together and formed a coalition to put on a fundraiser to benefit the improvements at the gun range. We've been working with both the Parks Department and the Sheriff's Department in planning this. It'll be on October 17th. We're looking to hopefully raise you all about $15,000 to contribute to the improvements of the range. We're trying and going to be looking for about 500 attendees. Each one of the clubs are going to put on a different program within the event. The IDPA, which will put on their specific program. The Carson City Rifle and Pistol Club will put one on in the covered rifle range. The Western Shooters will also put on a program that they're still working on. And NSLGC, the Northern Sierra Ladies Gun Club, will be utilizing the four pistol bases. We're going to be doing a celebrity shootout, competition shootout, along with some poker shootouts. And we're going to, and if I may, I have an invitation for each one of you to participate. And since the gun range is utilized by members of surrounding counties, we would like to include them and feel they should be a part of this as well. So we're going to be asking you all to challenge two of your counterparts in any one of the five surrounding counties to come out and have a competition shoot. It should be a lot of fun. You're going to be asked also to participate as far as maybe allowing the public to come out and challenge you specifically. So there's a lot of things that are still in the works and in the planning stage, but it should be a lot of fun. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them or get them started anyway.
Sounds like a lot of fun, Carol. I think you got a ringer up here, Bonkowski, you know.
Yeah. Well, we've kind of anticipated that as well. In the poker shoot, we will have two sets of targets. One will be facing the shooter so that they can pick out their five aces or their royal flush, but the other one will be turned away so that you can't see the cards, and it'll be strictly random, and you'll get seven shots out of five. In the competition shoot, you'll have a chance to gain bragging rights against the other mayors, the other city managers. We're inviting department heads as well, and so it should be a lot of fun. So if I may, I have your invitations.
Yeah, and I think a couple of us have to look at our schedules then.
October 17.
Yeah, we've got... I think we have, we're in Tel Aviv, some of us, on the Smart City Summit, but let us look at our schedules here.
Okay.
And don't tell the surrounding counties that our city manager is a Marine.
I have no intentions. I'm going to let him do that as well.
We'll hold that in the...
Our ace in the hole.
The ace in the hole, man, all right?
We're counting on that, because part of your package is going to be a pledge sheet so that you can go out and get your neighbors, friends, coworkers to pledge based on your points. So we do hope that if you haven't practiced lately, you will get out and do some practicing to get those points up and get the funds up for the event.
Very good. Thanks, Carol, very much.
May I pass these out?
You bet. Sure. Hang on a minute. We'll get right to you. Look.
Okay.
We'll be right there.
You are also a member of the organization.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you'd be able to, I'd like to be a part of this if you're adjacent. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Now go.
My name is Michelle Glenn. I'm also an officer on the board of the Grassroots of Action Network of 501(c)(4). I have a Bachelor of Science in Accounting from the University of Nevada Reno, and I will begin a Master's of Science in Nutrition Program at the National College of Natural Medicine in Portland in September. I wanted to share a couple of facts about glyphosate. So glyphosate is the active...
What is that?
Glyphosate is the active chemical ingredient in Roundup.
Okay.
It's an herbicide trademarked by Monsanto Corporation. Glyphosate is now a generic chemical in 750 products with over 650 million tons used in 2013 alone. The EPA safety data for the glyphosate by the chemical manufacturers is now 40 years old. The EPA only conducts safety tests on the active chemical ingredient of products, not on the combination of chemicals. A recent study by Serini's team showed the inert chemicals in Roundup make glyphosate 1,000 times more toxic. Glyphosate has been declared a Class II probable carcinogen by the World Health Organization, and it's probable because it's only based on tests on animal studies. There's no studies done on the effects of human health and specifically on cancer. And glyphosate, along with many other pesticides, is an endocrine disruptor. Endocrine disruptors halt or stop the development of a fetus. An infinitesimal development of... I'm sorry. An infinitesimal amount of glyphosate can cause permanent harm or death to a fetus. Therefore, it is not true that an ADI, or allowable daily intake, would protect our children. Glyphosate can also break down the blood-brain barrier, allowing toxins into the brain, connecting itself to autism and Alzheimer's.
Thank you, Michelle. Good morning. Go ahead. Go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and supervisors. My name is Kiki Corbin. I'm the president of Grassroots Action Network of 501(c)(4) and president of Grassroots Educational Forum of 501(c)(3). I'm a certified naturopath and a pastoral counselor. I used to be a full-time minister many, many years ago. I came from a farm family, so I understand the use of pesticides extremely well. I was sprayed consistently as a child, overhead spraying with DDT, that my family was told by the parent company, Monsanto, that was totally safe. Today, the research... It's been banned, of course. It took 10 years to get it banned in this country, but it's still used worldwide. Now we're told that our offspring, so my children and my grandchildren, have a higher risk of cancer and many other diseases because of DDT getting sprayed on me when I was a child. Well, 18 years it happened. Okay, so the same company today tells us that glyphosate is totally safe, and Monsanto and other companies tell us that all these other pesticides are safe. So in your packets, I'd like to introduce you to your packets. We have three documents that are very important. One is the 15 Health Problems Linked to Monsanto's Roundup. The second one is the Health Effects of 30 Commonly Used Pesticides. And please be sure to look at the heads of the columns: Cancer, Endocrine Disruption, Reproductive Effects, Neurotoxicity, Kidney and Liver Damage, Sensitizer Irritation, and Birth Defects. So all of these common pesticides, totally common, cause many, many, many problems. I have become friends with Nancy Swanson through my work on these issues, and Nancy lives up in Washington State. She's a retired physicist from NASA. She's now dedicated her retirement years to compiling data, CDC government data, on specific diseases charted against the use of glyphosate on crops and in the environment. And the correlations, if you guys know anything about statistics, I don't know. I used to be a statistician in my first career, is from 95% to 99% for cancer, autism, behavioral problems in children and adults, Alzheimer's, dementia, gut problems like irritable bowel syndrome, and prostate cancer. It's shocking. I mean, it's absolutely shocking. So we have the endocrine disruption that's so important, as you see, all of us are experiencing this now. We see eight-year-old girls hitting puberty. It's not supposed to hit till you're 12 or 13. It used to be, a long time ago, 16. Girls didn't hit puberty till 16. We see children, 1 in 50 children, babies being born today are being born with autism. How as a society are we going to handle all these kids in strollers, grown, you know, eight-year-olds, 10-year-olds in strollers in diapers? And then it's time to stop the proliferation of pesticides. I think our only hope, I'm telling you, as a citizen of this place, is to do it on the local level. We're not getting any help from the feds. We're not getting any... We've had a bill at the legislature here. I was the citizen lobbyist. We're not getting any help there, and this is the place that change is happening, where citizens, we have our own people in office, like you guys, I've helped elect all you guys here, and you know, it's just, this is our hope, to make a change, community by community across the country. And we, Sharon and I both have, we're on a national committee, and we've helped create a program that this same program is going to be brought within the next few months to almost every city council across the whole country. So we're really praying, thank you, Father, for the wonderful prayer earlier from the Pope, because the Pope really stuck... I've never heard a Pope, any leader, actually come out publicly, stick their necks out for the environment, and we're part of the environment, right? So thank you all.
Thank you. Probably should say that there are a number of us up on this board who have experience with another defoliant that was used quite extensively a long time ago, so...
In Vietnam?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's the next one coming, you know, is 24D.
We got you.
Being added with glyphosate now for new GMO crops. It's just crazy.
We got you.
If we use our common sense, we just know that there's just no way that that's a good thing for all of us, right?
Okay.
So anyway, we're here as an organization to help you in the city level, at whatever level we can, to help make that transition. I personally have met in Richmond with the fellow who's implementing that program there, so we're getting a lot of experience on how to do that.
Fine.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Anybody else? Public comment? Anybody? I don't see anybody. Okay. Let's then move on to item six, the approval of the minutes of June 4th. Everybody had a chance to look at those? Motion's in order if we don't have...
I move to approve the minutes of June 4th, 2015, as presented.
Second.
Motion and second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. On the adoption of item seven, the adoption of the agenda, city manager, any changes to the agenda? No change. Board members? Unless there's an objection, we'll take the agenda then as published. Let's now move from the dais down to the floor, and let's do the special presentations. Where's Lisa Davis? Is she here? Hey, how do you want to do this?
Sir, I'm just here. You tell them here.
Well, let's all come down here. We'll get it going. Cast.
Come on, dear recipient. Come on, get up. Come on.
I don't know if you want this.
Yeah, I'll have it. Yeah.
You want me here, sir?
Right here. Right here. It's fine. Right here. Who do we have here?
We have representatives from Advocates to Endomestic Violence, from both Carson City and the Washto Tribe.
Very good. All right. Well, this is a special presentation for National Night Out Crime, Drug, and Violence Prevention Awareness Month, which is going to be August of next month. Our sheriff, I can't let him get away without saying, he can't be there that night because he is receiving the national award for the Dare... How do you say that?
Dare Law Enforcement Executive of the Year.
The Dare Law Enforcement Executive of the Year, the number one guy in the country.
Oh!
Big deal, Kenny. Thank you. And you know, let me just say, before I read the proclamation, we're blessed in this community that you can see on national news, you know, other communities go through some trying times. We're blessed in this community because of the relationship that our law enforcement have with our public. National Night Out is a big part of that. It's a big part of how we gain understanding of the roles of each of our law enforcement agencies. So with that in mind, let me read a very important proclamation that reads as follows. "Whereas cities across America are addressing numerous problems associated with crime, substance abuse, and violence, including domestic violence, all of which can affect the quality of life throughout the community and brings harm to businesses, citizens, and children. And whereas the Carson City Sheriff's Office continues to develop strong police community partnerships that continue to result in the reduction of crime. And whereas Carson City Sheriff's Office recognizes that prevention of crime, substance abuse, and violence is a direct investment into citizens, particularly youth and families, and therefore honors and recognizes the many valuable contributions made throughout Carson City by Advocates to Endomestic Violence who are here today. And whereas Carson City Sheriff's Office knows that a spirit of cooperation and awareness are essential for all citizens, whether they are joining crime, whether they are joining crime and safety prevention efforts, becoming educated, or seeking help. And whereas on August 4th, 2015, the Carson City Sheriff's Office, Advocates to Endomestic Violence, and the National Association of Town Watch are standing with communities nationwide to sponsor National Night Out, which is Crime, Drug, and Violence Prevention. And whereas the theme for Carson City Sheriff's Office National Night Out is, quote, 'Partnership in Action,' unquote, and is the 13th annual celebration to give crime, drugs, and violence a going-away party. Amen. And whereas the goal of the Carson City Sheriff's Office is to invite citizens to participate in National Night Out and actively learn how to prevent crime, drugs, and violence. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowell, Mayor of Carson City, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors in our community, do hereby proclaim August 2015 as Neighborhood Outreach Crime, Drug, and Violence Prevention Month, and urge all citizens to actively participate in scheduled activities or/or seek help using programs that are working towards a crime, drug, and violence-free community for us in Carson City." So let me... Lisa, can I give this to you, and then can we have some of the folks here say a few words?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. How about you, too?
Thank you. I think I'll close this out. I'm going to go ahead and allow the advocates to speak, because we are making them our special feature this year, okay?
Hi, thank you for having us. My name is Rebecca Singleton, and I'm from the Advocates to Endomestic Violence here in Carson City of 501(c)(3). And we really appreciate this year, both... We've been working with Ken Furlong and Lisa Davis for a little bit now, and National Night Out is having domestic violence be the special feature, which hopefully we can bring as much prevention and awareness as we can to the community. And we are so excited to work with other agencies in the area and hopefully have some fun with it as well. There may be a bounce house in there.
Just make sure you have a lot of hot dogs.
My name is Angela Smokey, and I represent the Washto Tribe of Nevada and California's Domestic Violence Program as its coordinator and advocate. And as a survivor of a domestic violence household growing up, I am very grateful for the programs that we have and our partnerships with all our surrounding counties. We do share... for this next event. Thank you.
I guess I'll just round it out and put it all in proportion, perspective. You know, we talk about reducing crime in Carson City all the time, and what we can do to make it a better community. The reality of it is, crime rates are based on actual crimes that occur, and most often, the single largest influence on our crime rate in Carson City is assaultive behaviors. In that, within that category, the single biggest cause of assaultive behaviors in Carson City actually is domestic violence. And so, we're very, very honored to have you folks supporting us, and being with us, and standing with us this year. And I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hang on, man, Lisa? She wants to close out, too.
Sorry about that, Sheriff. I'm the Dare Officer for the Carson City Sheriff's Office, and have been for a little over ten years. And I can honestly tell you that I have picked up many, many pieces, and dried many tears as a result of drug use, as well as domestic violence. And so, I think that this issue is very near and dear to our hearts. At the same time, prevention should never be boring, and it should never drag you down. And that's one of the things that we have been partnering together, to make sure that we bring something that's fun and educational. At the same time as that, we have music, but we also have twenty-five-hundred hot dogs, sir. Okay? Thank you so much.
Well, I'll be there. I know what, I know the sheriff's got to be gone, but thank you to advocates, and thanks to the sheriff's office, and thanks to all our community partners, because I know there's a, it's a big deal to put this on, so. So, let's all get out on National Night Out, and go have some fun, and we will eat some hot dogs, if we can. Quiet about that. Okay, all right. Thanks very much, and thank you. All right. Let's now move to another important part of our agenda this morning, that is, special presentations to honor those of our employees who've had, been with us for a number of years. And so, at this time, I'd like Kelly Jo Reyna, is that Kelly? Where's Kelly?
Not here.
Not here? Okay. Frances, I know you're here. Come on up. Frances Ashley. Frances, on behalf of a grateful community, please accept this longevity award in recognition of your faithful and dedicated service for ten years of continuous service to Carson City. Thanks on behalf of all of us, and come on up here and say hello to the board, and make sure we get our picture taken, too. Up there. Up there. Jason Bueno? Jason? Good morning. You want to bring your family up here? Come on. Cops, come on. There we go. Good morning. So, who do we have here?
This is my wife Shannon, my daughter Faith, and my son Jack.
Very good. Welcome, good morning to all of you. Well, Jason, on behalf of a grateful community, we want to give to you, and I'm glad you're here to share this with your family, because I know it's a big deal for, you know, for the line of work you're in, takes a lot of family understanding. So, this is an appreciation for your ten years of continuous service to our Carson City. And thank you very much, and thanks to you, Faith, very much. So, come on up here, and we'll do some pictures, too. You want, they'll be okay, is that all right? Come on, come on, here. We'll hang on to this one. Maybe give that to one of the kids, huh? Brad Mahalik, Brad? Good morning, Brad. Haven't seen you, but I know your parents.
Yeah?
Yeah, been around a long time. Brad, on behalf of a grateful community, I would like to say thank you for all your work on keeping us safe and sound, and appreciation for ten years of continuous service to Carson City. So, on behalf of all of us, please accept this longevity award, and our community's thanks to you. And please say hello to your parents.
Will do, thank you.
Thanks, okay. There you go. There you go. Matthew Smith. Matthew? Oh, woo! I hear that, man. Who is that? That's the sheriff. Oh, he's got his motor boots on, too, huh? That, Matthew. Excuse me. Matthew, on behalf of a grateful community, thank you for ten years of continuous service of keeping Carson, those of us in Carson City safe and sound, for these last ten years, and we hope that there's many more years. On behalf of all of us, thanks for what you do, and keep doing it. And so, that's for you, and come on up here, and we won't keep you too long. Come on up, okay. Wendy. You're going to, woo-hoo. Dispatch. Hi Wendy, how you doing?
How are you?
Good. We hear your voice a lot, huh?
You do.
Yeah. Wendy, she works at Dispatch. On behalf of a grateful community, please accept this longevity award in recognition for your ten years of continuous and dedicated service to making this community a better place to live, work, and play. And we're going to continue doing that, folks, so. So, on behalf of a grateful community, please accept this longevity award, and keep doing it. Thanks, all right. Thank you, Wendy. All right, there you go. Come on up here. Tom, good morning. How you doing?
Good.
Yeah, woo-hoo.
Somebody.
Somebody's doing that. Man, okay. Tom, this is in recognition, it's a longevity award in recognition and appreciation for ten years of continuous and dedicated service to our community. I know you're everywhere, and I know, you know, you're in the middle of a lot of things, so on behalf of all of us, thanks for, from your community, for making this a better place to live, work, play, and be safe, and fire-free. Thanks. Thanks, Tom, okay. Now you can go, woo-hoo. Okay, all right. Ritt. Good morning, Ritt, how are you? Ritt Palmer. How many years is this?
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
I was going to say that's a side of it.
Twenty years. You've seen a lot of changes go on in this community in twenty years.
A lot of changes, a lot of people.
Think they're for the better changes, or what do you think?
For the better.
Okay, all right. They're for the better because of folks like you, and so, on behalf of a grateful community, please accept this longevity award, in appreciation for your twenty years of continuous and dedicated service to making this a better place to live. Thank you very much, Ritt.
Thank you.
There you go. Come on up here. Where's Kim? Where's Jared? Come on up here. Kimberly Adams.
Do something for your.
Woo-hoo, come on. Kimberly, we have a special request of you this morning. You know, we're always requesting special things, you know? But I know that your husband Jared can't be here this morning, but we would like you to take this longevity award and give it to him for his fifteen years of continuous service to making Carson City a better place to live, work, play, and be safe. He's in the middle of a lot of different things, as you know, and it sometimes gets very difficult. So, please convey our gratitude and thanks to Jared, and make sure he knows that we appreciate what he's done. Thanks. Okay, Kimberly, okay. Come on, no, you can come up here, too. Come on, then we'll give that to Jared, so. Oh, yeah, I, are we sure this one was, where did we find this one? Huh? We're done, I think. We're done. No, come on, Shyla. You know, I got a kid, Shyla, you know? Everybody up here, all aboard, knows Shyla, man, she, you know? What would, yeah, woo-hoo. What would you, what would you do if we didn't give you a hard time?
I don't know.
What would you do?
It'd be fun, that's for sure.
Well, that's why we kind of saved this to last, to a little, just rag on you just a little bit. Is that all right?
Ten years going on a hundred.
Ten years going on a hundred. Well, Shyla, in all seriousness, thanks for doing what you do for our community, and please accept this longevity award for ten years of continuous and dedicated service. And while we joke, we both know that you do a wonderful job for our community, so. Thanks, Shyla.
Thank you.
Okay, come on up here, come on. Up here. All right, let's get a picture. Ready?
Okay, let me get between Brad and Karen here.
All right. I got to get over here. Yeah, I think you guys are going to actually have to get closer.
Oh, this is lovely. I feel so together. Okay, is that better?
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Oh, you know what? Also, do we have all the family members who came to support their loved ones? Come on up. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't want no sneaking handshake. I want a huh.
out. Let's take up item number nine. This is to consider the application, accept the Bureau of Justice Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. You want to take us through this? I know it's pretty well described on the. Sure, I appreciate it. It's, after all we've done this morning already, this kind of fits right on in. This is a action to, or excuse me, an action to approve the application and acceptance of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $10,809. This grant application does fund many of our community initiatives as we reach out and attempt to establish strong relationships, primarily with our kids. This grant does fund things such as our Dare, Dare Plus classes, red ribbon campaigns, cops and kids spaghetti dinners, National Night Out, all of these things that we, that we believe are very, very critically essential to those relationships inside the community. And we're very proud of Lisa for, as our planner for all of these activities. So, with that, I can go straight to the end there, and suggest to you that this grant does require at least the opportunity for public comment, and that's why we always bring it to the board every year at this time. Okay, any public comment on this, on this one? Board, we okay? Thanks. Supervisor, go.
I move to approve the application and accept the BGA-FY 2015 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant application, number 2015H4229-NV-DJ, in the amount of $10,809.
Motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed nay, carried unanimous. Okay. Let's now take up item ten. This is to, from the assessor, to remove uncollectible taxes from the tax roll. Dave, you want to tell us a little bit about it, please? Kimberly?
Good morning, everybody. Dave Dolly, Carson City Assessor's Office. Each year, we are required by law to present to you all of the accounts that we have deemed uncollectible, and so that's what we're here for this year. Just kind of wanted to give a little bit of a background on how we try to collect all of the taxes. First off, we do send out the required notices by law, and our job pretty much is to collect the taxes. We don't want to shut businesses down, though, so the law does say that we can actually seize the equipment that's actually in the business to sell for delinquent taxes. We try not to do that. Actually, in the twenty-two years that I've been in office, we've never done that, because we do want to be a community that's very friendly for business, and we really don't want to shut businesses down. However, we do want to be serious about collecting of the taxes, and so, we have worked very closely with the code enforcement officer here in Carson City, Kevin McCoy. We've also worked with the business licensed people as far as trying to figure out a way that we can actually enforce one of the municipal codes, which says that all city accounts have to be paid current, before a city business license can be issued. We have actually leaned property, the owners, the owner of the business is real property, their residences, we put liens on it, and until those taxes are paid, and then we actually remove those liens. In certain circumstances, such as where a business is a corporation or a limited liability company, we're, our hands are kind of tied, because we can't lean those properties unless the business itself owns those, that property. And it has to be owned by the corporation or the limited liability company itself. And so, our hands are kind of tied as far as that is concerned. I'm sorry? Kim can go into it, as far as if it's a sulfur fighter. We've done a lot of research on this, we've really tried to collect all of the taxes, but unfortunately, if they've moved, if they've left the county, there's no way that we can actually collect all the taxes on it. So, we're just asking that these taxes be deemed as uncollectible, so we can remove them from the tax roll.
Okay. Public comment? Board? Go.
So, thanks. Dave, I really appreciate all the effort and the work that you guys do to collect the taxes and work with the businesses. And yesterday, I had a conversation with you, and so, just for a future, one of the things that we do here in Carson City is do agreements with the businesses or the taxpayers to allow them to make a payment plan. And so, I just ask if you could maybe work with the DA's office to see if there's a little bit more teeth or opportunities that you can do for protections within that agreement. So, it's just a future comment concerning the agreements. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bagwell. We've already been in touch with the DA, and we will continue to work with them. Again, we want to be strict with them, but we don't want to be so strict that we actually shut them down, so that they're not making an economic impact for Carson City.
Very good. Board, who wants to make a motion? Supervisor, go.
I move to approve the removal of the taxes and penalties from the unsecured 2009-10, 2010-11, 2011-12, and 2012-13 tax rolls per NRS 361.5607, in the amount of $13,323.13.
Motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed nay, carried unanimous. Okay. Thank you both. All right, now let's take up, we're going to be here a long day. I mean, we got morning, then we got board appointments, and then Board of Health at four o'clock this afternoon, so if I'm moving right along, that's why, but, okay. Let's take up legal cities. Wes Henderson, good morning to you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Board of Supervisors.
You get some break, you look rested.
Well, actually, I was just, excuse me, I was just getting ready to say it, I'm really pleased to be here, especially since Southwest side, I didn't need to get back from Las Vegas until after midnight last night. So, my fine, our fine friends. But it is a pleasure to appear before you today. I know that your lobbyist, Ms. Walker, has given a presentation to you about the legislative session, but I would like to touch on just three of the bills that the league had this session. You know, we're authorized by statute to submit five BDR requests each session, and we did, and we were successful in getting three of them passed this year, and successful in two. Two of the bills that we got passed directly impact Carson City. The first bill was Assembly Bill 19. This bill, excuse me, this bill changed the requirement for when you have to hold your, the hearing on your budget every year. Previous to this bill, you had to hold it on a specific date. For cities, it was the second Tuesday in May, for counties, it was the second Monday in May. So, you guys had your choice. You could have picked either one of those two days. This bill now creates a window, starting the third Monday in May and ending the last day of May, so that you can hold your budget hearing during a regularly scheduled meeting. You don't have to have a special, thank you, you don't have to have a special meeting to hear, to have the required hearing on your budget. Excuse me. Thank you, Nick. The second bill that will affect Carson City is Assembly Bill 25. This bill clarified that you can use revenue derived from the residential construction tax for improvements to. for improvements to existing parks and park facilities, and not just for the construction of new parks, you can do, the bill clarifies that you can do this if the improvements are attributable to the new construction from which the revenue was, was collected, and it's within the same park district, so that we think that is a benefit, you know, to all the, all the cities and counties in the state, one bill that we were not successful in getting passed was a bill that sought to create a state coordinating agency for the National Main Street Center, the, the National Main Street Center of the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and we knew going in this was going to be an uphill battle because we were asking for appropriation from the general fund that was not included in the governor's budget, but this is a wonderful program that I believe in, it would benefit Carson City, I know you guys are getting ready to do, you know, a project with downtown revitalization, having a state coordinating agency allows you to apply for grants through the National Trust for Historic Preservation, the town of Gardenville follows all the tenants of the program, but they can't be recognized as an official Main Street program because there's not a state coordinating agency, we had the president and CEO come out and testify on the bill, and she testified that nationwide for every, every public dollar that goes into this program, received 22 private dollars back, you know, so we feel this is an important program, we're going to continue to work, you know, with the governor's office, and with GOED and Historic Preservation Office to try and get, you know, money for this program included in the governor's budget for the next biennium so that we don't have to, to try to get money that hasn't been allocated, you know, and I'd like to touch on one piece of federal legislation that is important to our cities in Nevada, and that is the Remote Transaction Parity Act, which is HR 2775, this bill was introduced by Representative Chavich of Utah, Representatives Amadee and Hardy have signed on as co-sponsors of the bill, and this bill seeks to close the loophole on remote purchases, you know, as you know, if you go purchase something on the internet, and you don't pay sales tax on it, you're supposed to, you know, report the purchase to the Department of Taxation and submit uses taxes equal to sales tax, and, you know, I suppose that happens occasionally, but it doesn't happen very often, and a study by the University of Tennessee, they estimated that, that almost $344 million in sales taxes in Nevada goes uncollected each year because of this loophole, and nationwide, that figure is a staggering $23.2 billion, you know, the League has submitted letters to the members of our House delegation and like to encourage you to as well, so let me tell you a little bit about the League of Cities, the League of Cities, the first record we have in the League of Cities was a meeting organized in 1944, the League was officially incorporated in 1959 as an advocacy organization for the cities and municipalities in the state, you know, we've been active ever since, some of the things that we provide are training for our members, both for elected officials and for municipal staff, one way we do this is at our annual conference, which I believe you guys receive flyers, and hopefully a little keychain with Wendover well, because our conference this year is out in West Wendover, some of the educational sessions that we're going to have this year are adapting to drought conditions, getting along with businesses, how to participate in public lands management planning, keeping city halls safe, the business of marijuana, and an item that I know is dear to your heart, Mayor, is eliminating veterans homelessness, you know, so these are some of the topics we're going to have, we'll also have, you know, some, hopefully, dynamic speakers, and, you know, to me, the general sessions and the educational sessions are the meat and potatoes of our conference, but we also have social events, which gives you a chance to interact with your colleagues from across the state, so I hope you would, you would consider coming to our conference. So, why should Carson City join the League, you know, I want to start out by saying this, this presentation is no way to advocate you not maintain your membership in NACO, those of you, some of you know, not all of you do, but I came to the League of Cities from NACO, and I have a warm spark in my heart for that organization, and they do a fascinating job for their members, but why we believe that Carson City should be a member of both organizations is because you are both a city and a county, you know, NACO, like I said, does an excellent job, they have proficiency in Title 20 of the NRS, which is chapters 244 and 260, when I, when I was with NACO, I spent a great deal of my time on public lands, you know, they also focus on urgent medical care, urgent defense, and other issues to counties, the League, we have our expertise in Title 21 of NRS, which also applies to Carson City, which is chapters 265 through 268, you know, we deal more with municipal issues, and we focus more on economic development, downtown revitalization program, planning and zoning, business, parks and recreation, and other quality of life issues, you know, I, I think that you as the elected Board of Supervisors and your staff would benefit from interacting with other municipal leaders from across the state, and not just with the other Boards of County Commission, so, with that, like I said, we would love to have you as members, I understand that, you know, there's a cost associated with that, and you have to, to be careful of every dollar you spend, and I appreciate that as a taxpayer, but I think that our dues, the benefit that you would receive from membership would certainly, you know, our dues are certainly worth that, and we would love to have you onboard, you know, every legislative session, I am asked if all the cities in Nevada are members of the League, and I truthfully answer yes, because technically that's correct, that you are a combined municipality, but it would be really good to have the capital city of the state as a part of our League.
Understood, okay, Wes Wood, maybe, I see Jeff back there, but wasn't...
I was planning on saying those nice things about NACO before I saw him walk in, so, just for the record.
Well, you know, I know you two work well together, I mean, I've known you both personally, and I've watched you both in the legislature, but wasn't, didn't we at one time belong to both here in this...
Yes, Mayor, there's...
How long ago was that?
There was, there's been two times that my executive assistant, who's been with the League for 22 years now, where Carson City was a member of both organizations, the last time was, was with Mayor Texaria, was the mayor, and I don't know the time previously.
Yeah, I don't know how long we stayed, what, if you don't mind, what are the dues?
Just for Carson City, and let me explain the due structure as well, we have a base assessment, which is tied to inflation, and then we have a per capita assessment, which is based on an inverse sliding scale, in other words, the higher the population, the lower the per capita charge, so the dues for Carson City would be just a little north of $12,000, I don't have the exact figure with me.
And that, but that's a ballpark number, right?
That's pretty close, 12,000...
Okay, okay.
And our dues year is July 1st through June 30th, we're on a fiscal year.
Okay, good, board, anybody? Supervisor Bagwell, and Supervisor Sher, go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, what I'm trying to put together in my mind is, if we're a member of NACO, we also employ a few lobbyists, the Walkers, and we're here in the capital city and have the ability for our staff to testify on a regular basis and to follow, so, why would it benefit the taxpayers of Carson City for us to pay for another association, I'm trying to see what you broaden or bring to the table that we can't already have without paying more dollars.
Thank you Supervisor Bagwell.
Thank you Supervisor Bagwell, you know, the legislative part of the League's duties is a major part, but that's four months every two years, you know, so, the other training opportunities, like I mentioned, the educational, the educational sessions that we bring forward, and different training throughout the year, different publications, different interactions on more municipal issues than county issues, I think, you know, the expertise that we have, and more importantly, that our members have, that we will provide you opportunities to interact with, I think that is the benefit to Carson City.
So, are, we cannot attend those trainings if we're not a member?
You can certainly attend the conferences, you know, we do have a non-member rate, some of the other trainings that we put on though are, are member specific.
Good morning, in your summary that you sent us, you said you participate on bills submitted in Nevada if they impact more than one city, and our members support the bill, so, you would take a roll call of your membership to say, we support this bill or not, and it could be a bill specifically for Carson City, and the membership could say, no, and we're paying you a monthly or annual fee, and we can't get a bill through because the supporters in your organization don't support what we're doing?
No, I, that's not exactly what I meant by that answer, if a bill, if a bill typically only affects one city, you know, the League itself doesn't go out and take a position on it, we're certainly be willing to help out if we can, you know, but we don't normally take a position on a bill that only affects one city, if a city brings forward a bill that has impact to all of our cities, then yeah, we will discuss, we have both a legislative committee, which is made up of elected officials, and then we have a government affairs committee, which is made up of staff of the cities, and we discuss the bills, you know, and try to take a position on them, I can't remember any bill since I've been with the League of Cities that was brought by an individual city that the League opposed, you know, I can't see that happening.
What is the number one benefit to Carson City to join and pay you an annual fee? What would be the number one benefit for us?
I think the number one benefit would be, you know, the interaction with other municipal officials throughout the state, the sharing of, you know, I've got this issue, what have you done about it, you know, because there's not a lot of new problems in the world, there's problems that come up, and they get changed a little bit with different technology and whatnot, just the expertise that the other members of the League can share with you, I think is a huge benefit to Carson City.
I know this agenda item is just to tell staff to explore the possibility of joining it, so, when they, when they look at this and the feasibility to join an LC, would they come back with this and say other benefits that we, we would have, I mean, when you sit down and talk about this with staff, the feasibility about studying, would you be outlining the other high priorities that we will benefit from joining this organization?
We would certainly, you know, explore the whole process of, and, you know, all the things that the League does with staff.
And when you come, if we do join this organization, how do you report back to the board here during session, because the reporting back from our lobbyists and everything is just an email, I mean, do you come and present things to this board and other issues that are coming?
You know, since you're in Carson City, that is feasible, you know, I, I'm pretty much stuck in Carson City for 120 days during the legislative session, so I can't go to the, our members' boards, but we do have, you know, a weekly phone call with the legislative committee, we send out a weekly legislative update, you know, so, and then we also have, you know, the lobbyists that are up here, the staff and the hired lobbyists from our member cities, they, we have a lunch every week to, to go over what's going on in the legislative building, you know, determine positions and strategies, et cetera.
So, we understand, does, you don't physically come over here at board meetings, unless, I guess you could if you're, if you're expected set up, but I mean, is that a part of your routine?
You talk about during the session?
Yeah, for keeping the, or is it, I don't know.
Well, during the session, I don't currently go out and give personal briefings, because, like I said, I need to be here in Carson City, the fact that you're in Carson City, and if you would like a briefing, probably not, you know, every, every meeting, but if there are key issues that are coming up in the legislature that you want to vet in this environment, I would certainly be happy to do that, giving time constraints with the legislative session, but I can certainly, you know, meet with any of you individually as well.
City Manager.
Excuse me, sorry, Mr. Mayor, for the record, the annual dues are $12,273.
And, I would like to mention that the, like I said, we have, we have a base assessment, that assessment is tied to CPI, so it does adjust a little bit each year, this year it actually went up $9.40, and then our dues are also capped.
You raise it $9.40, that's not worth the price of postage, that's okay, go ahead.
Well, that's just tacked on, that's, that's...
How many, how many of the member cities have their own independent lobbyists, outside of, outside of League of Cities, or outside of NACO, I mean, we're the only ones that qualify for both, but, how many cities have independent lobbyists like we do here? If you know, or just a guess.
Now, a lot of the larger cities send staff up, you know, like the City of Henderson, City of Las Vegas, City of Reno, City of Sparks, they all have staff, they also, let's see, Las Vegas, Henderson, Sparks and Reno all have outside lobbyists as well, the City of Fernley had an outside lobbyist this year, and the City of Elko, so about, about six cities, I think, and that's just off the top of my head, there may be more, but I know those six for sure.
Okay, Jim, I'm sorry, go, Supervisor Sher.
When staff comes back after looking at the feasibility of joining, will we have kind of an outline of how you will work with our lobbyists and with NACO, how this all intertwines out, everyone will work together for, for us, for Carson City, or do you work totally separate outside of NACO and our lobbyists, you'll be a different third-party entity?
We work with NACO as, as often as we can, you know, a lot, a lot of times, NACO and the League are on the same page on issues, occasionally there are issues where we're not, but we try to work, work with NACO, you know, as much as we possibly can, like I said, I have a warm spark in my heart for NACO.
And how do you work with our lobbyists?
I've known Ms. Walker for, ever since I started working with NACO, and we work well together.
I know you may work together well, but do you work collectively on bills that are going through the legislature session?
Yes, we've actually gone together to meet with legislators on a particular piece of legislation.
It's kind of like double dipping, we're paying her and paying you to, to do the same thing?
And you get twice the punch.
I'm sorry.
And you get twice the punch, you know, there's a lot of, you know, sometimes we have to share responsibility, she can't get around to all the committee members, and I can't get around to all the committee members, but we can split them up and go talk to the committee members on a particular piece of legislation, or, once it gets out of committee, to, you know, different members of the body that the bill is in.
You know, it's, you know, one of the ways I think, or, you know, at least comes to mind, that League of Cities and NACO worked together in a sense with on the home rule bill, because I know that that came out of Gocia and NACO, and then cities used that template at the end, is that right or wrong?
Right, there was actually a couple of home rule bills this session, one, one had both of us in it, that bill, we weren't able to get that bill processed, NACO moved their bill forward, we had a second bill that we didn't have time to process, so that then when the, the language that eventually got passed, and Senate Bill 29 came out, which was May 15th, and we got that language, and we looked at it, and we sent it out to, to our city attorneys, and we came to consensus that that was language that was acceptable to us, then we went to the speaker and were able to get a mirror image bill processed.
Other comments or questions from the board? Comment?
You know, based on our discussion today, I'm not sure whether we should or should not join the League, but I certainly don't see any harm in looking at the feasibility of it, so, I can make a motion if, whenever, when everybody's done with their comments.
Let me see if, did I ask for public comment already? Public comment, anybody? Okay, we'll come back, your board, Lori, go.
Just a comment that I clarify on the board action, when we say examine the feasibility, it will come back to this board for a decision, even though the amount wouldn't, I just want to make sure it's clear that it's coming back to us to vote whether to be a member, it's not going to be that the staff examines the feasibility and makes a decision, so it must come back to this board.
That was my understanding of it. That was my understanding of it. You know, just let my hair down for half a second. You know, sometimes I get, uh... I guess, you know, the legislature creates policy, and I wonder sometimes, you know, how active or involved a community, a public entity such as us or any of the cities or counties should be involved in that. And then I come back, you know, so I start, I kind of start from that premise that, you know, all other things being equal, if it was a perfect world, we wouldn't have to have lobbyists over there or be there at the legislature because, you know, we're not the policy drivers, they are. And if they want to have information from us, they could ask for it. And then, you know, I see the actual reality of what happens on the ground there and how much stuff gets pushed to us without being asked whether we want to do things or not. And that leads me to the other side of the equation, and I know that any more, you know, the tougher these issues, the more it requires individual contact with each legislator, usually on the committees, but sometimes all 63 of them at once. And so, you know, I'm glad we're taking a look at this. I'd like to know, because I think that, you know, we don't want to spend too much money on doing these things. And I'm always kind of sensitive, you know, that, you know, we do live here in the community. We can do things ourself, but it is difficult to do those things ourselves when really the function of, you know, the benefit of having a lobbyist, even whether it's an organization or a personal one, is the ability to be in that building all the time. And I can't stress the fact that being in that building is critical if you're going to watch what's going on. I mean, because we can be out here and get the emails and everything, but unless you're there getting a pulse and tenor of what's going on, it's very difficult. Okay, so that's kind of where I am. I'll see where this comes down with us. Anybody else? Motion's in order.
I move to accept the 2015 municipal legislative report prepared by the League of Cities and direct staff to examine the feasibility to join the Nevada League of Cities and bring it back to us for decision within 60 days.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thanks. Go get some sleep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, I have work to do.
All right, all right. Thanks, Wes. Good morning to you too, Mr. Fontaine from NACO. Good. Let's take up number 12. Chief Schrehanz, you want to walk us through this issue on getting paid and Tom Trulli paid portal, portal as opposed to hourly, as opposed to being on scene?
Sure. For the record, Robert Schrehanz, the fire chief. Also with me is Tom Trulli. Actually, I'll let Tom talk about this one. It was assigned to him, so if you have a question, you can revert to me and both.
Morning, Tom. Go.
Board, Mayor, good morning. Yeah, I like this resolution. I mean, all resolutions are great, but this one brings money back to the city, so we like this one a lot. Each year before wildland season, we meet with officials from California, Cal OES, Office of Emergency Services. This year, when we met, they said, "Look, gentlemen, we are, just like any other state, we're expecting a lot of fires this year, wildfires, and it's going to tax our resources. And we want to ask you again, please, when we call state to state for mutual aid help, we want you to respond." And one of the ways they want to make that easier and more agreeable to both sides is they said, "If you would take a resolution to your board that says they support the idea of paying portal to portal, like we do, our guys, when they leave the city, we pay them the whole time they're gone, whether they're fighting fire or not." Most places, they only pay you when you're there, when the time you're fighting fire, and when you're off, you don't get paid. And California would be willing to say, "We'll pay them the whole time you're here, just like you guys pay them the whole time we're here." And if you bring a resolution signed by your board saying that's how you operate in Carson City, we'll abide by that. So when we come back from the fire and we put together all the documents, the reimbursement forms, and we put on there Carson City Portal to Portal, and they bring up the Carson City in the spreadsheet, say, "Yes, they have a resolution on file signed by the board," which is a long term, it's not an annual thing. We're in the system for good. And so when we submit that reimbursement, it means a lot more money paid back to the city for our participation in helping them fight their fires. There's not a lot of people willing to do that, and when California offered that up to the chief and I, we said, "We will take that to the board and we will get that document to you. If they approve, it brings, it makes more money back to the city, and we like that."
And Tom, right now, if we send somebody to California for a fire, we start paying them from the day they leave our door, though, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, so we're not just making money, but we're recovering costs as well?
Yes.
Okay. Sub vice. Frankowski, go.
So this agreement is only with California. The other surrounding states, Oregon, Idaho, Utah, Arizona, do we have similar agreements or is California the only one that we would have this agreement with?
With this type of agreement, just with Cal OES, the other agreements we have would be LM or the Forest Service or other neighboring departments. It's time on the fire that we get reimbursed for. So this makes this very attractive, very appropriate, and it's because they pay their California firefighters the same way. And they felt, "We're going to pay our firefighters this way, we should pay our neighboring state firefighters that come and help the same way."
And do you know approximately on the calls for mutual aid, what percentage come from California as opposed to other areas, jurisdictions? I won't hold you to it, I'm just curious.
One of the things, last year, we had a couple of big fires. They were the King Fire. They were, that was on the Sacramento side, the side of the Sierras. Plus, we also sent crews to Southern California. We went to, it really depends upon whether or not it's a Cal OES fire or it's designated as a US Forest Service fire. And that's kind of the difference. Like, the King Fire was US Forest Service, so it wasn't, it was in California, but it was, it was the Humboldt Tuolumne Forest, so we're under the Forest Service agreements. So if you look at what our billing was last year, I think we only billed Cal OES for two fires. But we had, they were there for a long time, 21 days at a time for those crews, so it becomes expensive for them. So to give you that as an estimate, it's kind of hard to pick out. It really depends on how it qualifies. And the other question you had on the other different states, like Idaho and all those others, what our mutual aid agreements fall under on those national ones are usually under the Forest Service agreements. So it's either BLM or US Forest Service, because not all the other states have a Cal OES like California does. So California's, Cal OES is the largest, basically the largest firefighter, fire department in the United States, so they actually do things a little differently than the other states do, and we operate on our other BLM and US Forest Service agreements.
Thank you. And then just a note, before we make a motion, on the signature page, the date needs to be changed from June to July.
Yeah, we cut that from July to June. It just got put in in June.
What's the typo on there?
One more thing on this before you make the resolution. One of the things, I would like to thank Nancy Paulson. The other thing that you guys don't see in front of you is they asked, the state of California asked for, normally in the past, you haven't seen these agreements, you haven't seen this, they asked for a change in the way we do our administrative fee. And normally, it's, you can have it two ways. You can do a blank at 10%, and that's usually what Chief Giomi had done in the past, if it just paid the 10% administrative fee, so we add that on top of that. But we did a bunch of paperwork in a long time with Nancy. She had to do a lot of work, so we changed our administrative fee that actually shows what the true cost is for us, so we actually have a higher reimbursement rate on that. And I would like to say thanks to her for doing that. So it took a couple of days for us to figure it all out, so it worked out well. Thank you.
You're not done yet, so.
Just a question, in terms of the fact that you get paid more through this, if this resolution, if this is passed, God forbid that there's a fire in Idaho and there's a fire in California. Does that prioritize it in your mind in terms of response and sending folks out, or how does that work?
How we work our system is basically it's first come, first served, for the most part, because we have a limited resources. So our policy is if we have the guys that are going to come back to work to cover the stations or cover Carson City, then we'll send a crew out. Usually, we are only, we only have the ability to send two crews, usually. So if California calls first, first engine goes, then we have an option of sending another engine, and all we'll send out is two, because that's all we can, because we can't cover the other days.
Just to, before we make the motion, if you'd also just correct the typo on paragraph two, or similar document, will be used to compensate. So it's just a typo correction there.
We'll fix that. I'll blame Tom for that one, so.
Got it, Tom. Will be used to compensate. We'll correct that. Okay, all right. Anybody else? Public comment? Sub vice.
Make the motion. I move to authorize the mayor to adopt and sign a resolution allowing for portal-to-portal reimbursement from Cal OES, California Office of Emergency Services, for personnel costs for response to fires in California.
There's a motion by Sub Vice Rayboud, second by Sub Vice Shirk. On the motion, discussion?
Do we need a resolution, or?
Resolution, 2015 R-31.
And can we include that in the motion?
Repeat that again?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Resolution number 2015...
R-31.
R-31. I'll reread it. I move to authorize the mayor to adopt and sign a resolution, resolution number 2015 R-31, allowing for portal-to-portal reimbursement from Cal OES, California Office of Emergency Services, for personnel costs for responses to fires in California.
Now, there's a motion, second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous.
Thank you. Can I have one point before we go? I'd just like to say to Nick back there, if he's paying attention, it's been an honor working with him, and we're going to miss that guy, and he's done a great job. And also Nancy's also going to do a great job in stepping up, so I just want to tell Nick, it's been a great time working with him and been here for a long time, and he really helped the city, and he's really instrumental in helping us out, because I go there all the time with questions. "How does this work?" He keeps looking at me like, "Really?" So he's done a great job, but he, I just want to say thank you.
I know you don't just go there and say, "How does this work?" You go there and say, "How much, how much do you have? I want some." We ready to take up the next item on the street abandonment, item 13? Ready? Mr. Plummel, go take us through it. Item 13.
Good morning.
Abandonment of the right-of-way application for Victor Honan, MAP Enterprises et al.
Good morning. Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. Yeah, this item is for action to approve an abandonment of public right-of-way, basically the abandonment of East Sophia Street between Carson Street and Plaza Street, as described on the agenda, to represent that graphically, to kind of understand what an abandonment of, street abandonment means. We'll refer to this graphic up there. First of all, the applicant is Victor Honan. The applicants are all of the adjacent property owners. The three property owners, basically outlined in yellow there, with the applicant being Mr. Honan, who is the owner of the Arco AMPM store on the corner of Carson Street and Williams Street there. And he's here today representing the other property owners as the applicant. So the abandonment of street, we have East Sophia right-of-way, again, look, sorry, we don't want to do that. So here's the Arco AMPM. We have Sophia Street that runs between Carson Street and Plaza Street here, with the existing right-of-way shaded there. And with the existing property lines, obviously, we'd be back behind the right-of-way line. Should the abandonment go forward, the resulting property lines are shown in yellow on this graphic, so the adjacent property owners gain half of the right-of-way to the center. So there would still be three properties, and the right-of-way would go away. And if the abandonment goes forward, it'd be subject to the conditions of approval that are recommended in the staff report and in the system. So kind of, looking at it, backing up a little bit and looking at the general area and circulation pattern in there, again, this is kind of looking from the north, so it's a little bit different angle to orient everybody. East Williams Street is here now, Carson Street down to Washington Street on the top of the page, and I've highlighted the Sophia Street portion of the road that would be abandoned. In the, this is in the downtown mixed-use zoning district. In that district, it allows for abandonments of street and creation of larger blocks up to, up to a limit. This is certainly within that permitted limit. It basically allows, we have relatively small, small old blocks in the, you know, historically, they were smaller back then than what kind of modern development would create, but it does allow the combination of two blocks together to create blocks of this length, so it's in compliance with that. The downtown mixed-use also talks about considering the circulation patterns and view sheds and drainage and things like that, which we have throughout, and in looking recently at the Capitol Mall project and identifying the streets that are critical east-west, north-south, et cetera, to remain open for both view sheds and circulation and drainage. And that has been considered in this application and recommendation of approval by both planning and the engineering department. And actually, I have the engineering manager here, Danny Rodder, who can talk a little bit more about how traffic circulation will work with the abandonment of the street before I finish up with my presentation. I think it's good on this graphic.
Yeah, Danny Rodder, Public Works for the record. As far as we look at this, the intersection spacing on a, on a street like this is actually better to be farther apart. Identified in the Carson Street traffic study, actually, three over the last seven or eight years, has identified that block between William and Sophia for stacking purposes. So our design right now has two lanes down to Sophia, and then we transitioned to one lane. So it actually helps us, if you've ever tried to, you always end up backing up behind that to allow for room to come in there. It's actually better to have a driveway there, a little bit smaller entrance to allow for an opening than, than to have that wide of a, of a street entrance. And so when we looked at it and looked at the minimal traffic that goes there, also with Anne just to the south, and the majority of traffic coming from the west, heading north or south on the Carson Street, we felt like it was, wasn't a detriment. It was actually probably a good thing.
So just a, just a couple more items to wrap up my presentation. I wanted to refer real quick to the conditions of approval on page 15, just to note that there are some conditions that come along with this. A lot of them are standard conditions that are applied to all abandonments for processing. Numbers seven and eight, recommended conditions, numbers seven and eight have to do with some of the exhibits and corrections, and those have both already been corrected in the exhibits that are included with the order of abandonment are in there. So the applicant is taking care of that, and in one case, corrected by the city. Just a couple other. There's also utility, a 20-foot-wide utility easement that will be continued. There is water and sewer mains in the center of the street, so utility easement will continue in that area, so that'll prevent any buildings from being built on top of that, so that utilities can continue to have access as needed to that 20 feet. But the existing, the existing right-of-way is 66 feet wide. And then finally, I've had some questions on condition number four in particular, that says a commercial driveway approach must be constructed on the entrance on Plaza Street. So that's a requirement of the applicant, and it came up as to, well, how is this going to be incorporated into the new Carson Street design? Well, as you know, you haven't, the 30% design has not been brought to the board yet and will be at the first meeting in August, but you've probably seen the graphic that's on the wall outside of the meeting room here that has the whole street. And I did, and I would note that this has been in the works for a few months with the applicant and engineering, so actually, on the Carson Street side, a driveway approach is shown in those plans. So that, so that has been accounted for, assuming this goes forward. It could, of course, that can still be changed if needed, but assuming this goes forward, it's been designed as a straight-across driveway approach rather than having the curb returns. Well, actually, I got the graphic here of that section of the street. So it's been designed, I'm trying to get the, there's, there's, okay. So we're right here. It's been designed as a driveway approach. Rather than the curb returns and ADA ramps like this, it's just a straight-across driveway approach at that location, so it'd be designed to accommodate that. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this. Actually, this is a correction to the cover of the board action form. They recommended approval 6-0 with one absent, not six, not six to one, and we're available to answer questions. Well, again, the applicant's here for questions, and we're available for questions as well.
Lee, did you look at conditioning the abandonment with reciprocal ingress/egress agreements between the three property owners as well as reciprocal parking agreements?
We did not include that as a condition because each property has legal access. So it's not, it's not a, well, I guess if there, if there's a driveway there... So it's not, it's not a, well, I guess if there's a driveway there, if, yeah. So typically, I've kind of looked at Danny there, because we are putting a driveway across that property line or requiring them to, so that's a good point. Typically, access easements will only be, cross-access easements would only be required if there's no access to any of the given parcels, but all of these parcels have legal access, so there's not any legal access necessary through the existing Sophia Street right-of-way. Perhaps, with the plans, perhaps Mr. Honine can address that.
It seems like it would solve some future problems, and there's no real downside to it. I just think we should take a look at it.
I think that's a good point. I don't know if we can require that, so I think we'll have to double-check on that.
Okay. Subvice Shirk.
Just on, number five on page 15, the 20-foot-wide utility easement, where is that in relationship to property lines?
Essentially, the, each of the three utilities, Storm Sewer and Water, and their spacings with the 20-foot centered on there, take up almost the whole right-of-way. So rather than trying to delineate one from the other, there's three utilities with a 20-foot right-of, with a 20-foot easement, and it takes up the majority of the, of the future property in that area.
Can the property owners, if this was to move forward, each property owner would acquire part of Sophie Street as their property, correct?
Correct.
Can they fence it off, put driveways on it, and treat it any way they wish?
Other than building a building on it, they could apply for a building permit to do something, and then we would have to review it with per-development standards.
So each property owner could put a driveway into their property?
Well, I don't know how you would, there already is a driveway, so I don't know what you're asking.
Well, you have one driveway going in accessing Sophie, but couldn't each property owner on Carson Street have an entrance onto Sophie?
They would, we would have to take into consideration driveway spacing. I don't know, I'd have to see a specific coming in as a submittal on that, and we'd have to look at the development code.
And each property owner could put up fences or whatever they wish, as long as it's on their property after it's abandoned and they take control of it, correct?
With the exception of trying to work out a parking agreement between them, but it would become their property.
I had submitted some questions to Lee earlier, and I think what I was looking at on page two, or page 18, question two, which said, "There are no records indicating the city ever paid for the right-of-way," but the response back was, I'm sorry, the response back was, "A map was recorded in 1963 showing the right-of-way as a city street." So it's been maintained by the city since 1963. So we do have costs from 1963 to maintain that street. I don't, I'm trying to think of the rationale to just give something away. Why didn't we look at the possibility of maybe having an appraisal done on it and having the applicant purchase the property, since they're going to have full control of it? They will gain some momentary financial benefit from it. So I'm just wondering, why are we just giving it away?
By state law, that's how abandonment works, and actually, in case law, and the city's been involved in cases, a specific case in the past, we cannot legally charge for the right-of-way if the property, if the city did not pay for the right-of-way to start with, we can't charge for it to give it back to the property owners, and that's state law. That's absolute.
So there is no, by state law, we couldn't ask for any funding or anything, even though they will gain, you know, in the long term, they will gain financially from the abandonment?
They gain, they gain property, they gain the ability to develop the property, the city gains more property on the tax roll, so it's assessed, it's a larger property, it's assessed at a higher value, they have the ability to build more improvements on that property that are also assessed. So that's the trade-back to the city, is that it's on the tax rolls and taxes are collected on it, whereas it's not, that property's not taxable right now.
And in this area, I mean, there's similar streets like this, would this be a common, I mean, are we gonna look at this in the future for other streets in this area as well? I mean, I can't see the street, but there are other similar streets. Would we look at the possibility of abandoning those streets and giving it to the other property owners, such as, I think it's Caroline?
We've looked at, you know, as part of the downtown master plan, you know, meaning like back in 2006, 2007, and looking at the framework and developing the standards that identify how small, how many blocks you can combine, we've started to look at that. There are certain streets like Washington Street, and, you know, certainly Washington Street, and certainly some others, that you would never want to block for circulation or abandonment or drainage or other purposes, but there's a number of streets that potentially could be abandoned in the future. You know, I think part of it, too, is in, as you get to the core, you also consider the public parking that's part of it and other things, but there are potentially others that would be considered, but not, that doesn't, because this is being abandoned, that doesn't mean any street anywhere in the downtown can be abandoned to combine two blocks. We would look at it, certainly look at it closely on an individual basis.
You mentioned parking, does this affect, I'm sorry, you want to add?
I was just gonna mention that this has been done quite a bit in other little areas. Caroline, west of the museum, in front of the Silver Queen, right there, that's actually still right-of-way. At the time, there was improvements built there as part of the parking lot for Silver Queen, but it was never actually abandoned. So there's a couple little pockets of stuff like that that has been done over time to redevelop a block or do something like that. So we will take any, as an applicant, one-on-one basis, depending on how they come forward.
You mentioned parking, how does this affect downtown parking? It takes some parking spots out of there? I mean, I've drove by since we had this board agenda, and I always see cars parked there. So how does it affect downtown parking?
Well, I think they're still going to be there, as far as the applicant has directed us, because with the utilities, it's not like you could put a building right in the middle of it. So I think it's going to support parking, and it would just be, become private parking instead of public parking.
Yeah.
For each of those businesses and around.
Yeah, and I haven't raised, it's kind of on the fringe of the downtown, it's not in the core, so it's on the edge of the downtown area where there's a lot of shared parking and not used. So we didn't raise it as a significant issue in terms of providing park, providing public parking for the downtown area. The parking there, I believe, more serves those businesses that are already there.
What is the difference between, on Proctor Street, where the Restaurant Brewery, we did a special permit there to allow them to put something on city streets? What is the difference between that? Why couldn't we do that here as well?
Well, I guess we could, when there's other instances, like around the Brewery Arts Centers, where there's some occupation permits for occupying the right-of-way, encroachment permits for occupying the right-of-way and having certain improvements, that would be approached, but again, it wouldn't be on the tax rolls, would be one thing. We'd be allowing them to use it without actually abandoning the street. So I think in some of those other instances, we're not sure we'd want to fully abandon the street forever, which we would be doing here, but again, this just allows them to have the property, put the property on the tax rolls and use it for development.
Is there any other instances where we've abandoned a street? Is that, can you think of anything else that we've ever done like this in recent times?
Over time, I mean, there hasn't been a lot of, in recent years, there hasn't been a lot of development occurring generally, and usually these abandonments have to do with buildings. So there hasn't been a lot recently. Over the years, there's been a lot of abandonments in Carson City. Where the Nugget is right now was a street abandonment. We're looking at, and I wouldn't, this wouldn't meet the current standard in terms of creating that super block, but that block there between Stewart, Washington, Plaza, and William Street, were all abandoned, were all streets that were originally platted and abandoned. So yeah, there's, we could provide a lot of examples.
Public comment? Sitting on board? We ready? Motion's in order, Subvice Shirk goes.
I move to approve an abandonment of public right-of-way application to abandon a 66-foot-wide and 170-foot-long right-of-way on East Sophia Street between Carson Street and Plaza Street, on property adjacent to 1017 North Carson Street, 1,000 North Plaza Street, and 917 North Carson Street, APN 002-162-0102, and 002-163-04, and authorize the mayor to sign the order of abandonment.
There's a motion and a second on the motion, discussion, Subvice Shirk.
I apologize, I thought the applicant was gonna be called forward. I didn't know we'd have to specifically call him forward. Could we still do that?
I wasn't gonna, unless the applicant wanted to say something, I don't know that, what, if you've got additional questions, Jim? Do you have questions?
Yes.
I mean, he's all, yeah, go, let's try it.
For the record, Victor Honine, owner of AMPM, one of the applicants on the application.
I apologize for mispronouncing your name at the beginning, but I get it, too. Go, Subvice Shirk, go.
Good morning. I know in the application, you're talking about putting a structure on there, a restaurant. Can you tell us a little bit about what you think you may be doing with the property, should this abandonment go through?
Yeah, I am planning basically to put a structure on the part that's not part of the easement, and probably use part of the easement for, as a driveway, a drive-through. Basically, we're thinking right now, planning to start with like burger and shakes, so at the corner there. As for the other property owners, discussed, I mean, they already use space for Hardman House for their clients and for their employees, so they're gonna keep using it the same way. And the property owner on the back, they're gonna keep using it the same way for now, as a parking space.
You're gonna have a drive-through where you come in off Carson Street and exit out to Plaza Street? Is that for the drive-through restaurant? Is that correct?
No, could be, exit back and onto Carson Street.
I thought there was gonna be a driveway on Plaza, a driveway.
Yeah, driveway on Plaza. It can be, if they leave the part, the easement the same way as I do, it will exit on Plaza.
Okay, I'm still confused, sorry. You're gonna, entrance from Carson Street?
Yeah, the backside of my property is owned by the different owner. So if they agree to leave it also as a drive-through, so it will exit on Plaza.
Okay, so we're gonna drive in from Carson and exit out Plaza, yes or no?
Yes.
That's how they're gonna do the restaurant, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any, are you gonna have any outside dining or anything? Is this a drive-through?
No, basically, at this point, the first structure will be take-out window and drive-through.
Thank you.
There'll be a few seating, I mean, a couple tables outside.
There will be outside dining?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bring back the Penguin. On the motion, further discussion? If not, all, discussion's in order, go.
Before, I commend you for your, you know, business sense to do this and to come forward and do this for the community. Me personally, I cannot vote in favor of this, to abandon the city's property. I commend you for what you're accomplishing, and I'm sure it'll pass, but I'm gonna stand on my ground, so thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
So, one of the issues, too, that we can look at is we'll be increasing the tax roll and actually also reducing street workload for maintenance. And I know that our city has a very difficult time even maintaining our roads, and so this cost for maintenance will now become, and that's the discussion that I actually was liking to have here, who of each property owner to the new yellow lines will have to maintain that piece of the roadway? So I guess that's the only clarifying thing I'm looking for, is how's it gonna be maintained between the three property owners? Because now we won't have the responsibility to do it, right?
It's not gonna be roadway anymore, so.
They'll have to maintain it.
Well, they don't have to maintain it as public right-of-way. It's gonna be driveway for their businesses or whatever, however they choose to develop it.
But they'll maintain it in that purpose.
They'll be required, yeah.
And so that removes that responsibility from the city to do any maintenance.
Subject to other things, like weed abatement, right? They'll be responsible for that property.
So it, okay, so the taxpayer will benefit and increase taxes and lower maintenance fees? Okay, thank you.
Laurie's comments go back to what I was saying earlier about if, Victor, if you have ingress/egress agreements, reciprocal parking agreement, and maintenance agreements with the other two property owners, it will solve a lot of problems going forward for all three of you. For instance, if you're maintaining your portion of your property, and first, somebody coming in your drive-through to go to the restaurant wouldn't necessarily have the ability to drive through to Plaza unless you had this reciprocal ingress/egress agreement, because they're gonna be going over private property behind you. Also, if you're maintaining your portion of the street abandonment, but the other two properties are not, you have no recourse, where if you have a reciprocal maintenance agreement, then each one of the property owners has the ability to come in and maintain it, and then get reimbursement from the other property owners. So it solves a lot of problems going forward if you can work with the other two property owners and get all these agreements in place up front. So that was the purpose of me bringing it up.
Yeah, we already talked to each other, and we all agreed basically on the same thing, so, and we're on the same page, so, and we're doing each their part. And basically, by, it's a given, I mean, because we have to leave 20 feet easement that will be used on, for all three of us as a drive-through. So that's how it's going to be worked out.
Further discussion?
Yeah. I mean, going back to the discussion we've had here, you know, the benefits to the property owner extremely outweigh the cost the city pays to maintain that street. You know, I congratulate you for, you know, it's an idea, it's great coming forward and looking for this abandonment, but in essence, you're gaining a lot, we're not saving that much. So again, I'm sticking to my principles. Thank you.
Frankly, I think that the Carson Street area is in transition, and I think it's quite appropriate to look at abandonment for development purposes, because, you know, we got a lot, as Mr. Plummel said, we got a lot of these areas that are short-term streets, short-length streets, that really don't add anything to the downtown. And so, you know, from my standpoint, I think that, you know, this is, this is part and parcel. We've got people who want to spend money to develop an area that, for lack of a better word, you know, is not particularly used right now, other than people wanting to skirt around William Street. I'm gonna vote for this, so. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose nay?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna take a break until 10:30. We'll be in recess.
Thank you.
Bring back the Penguin.
Yes. Yes.
Thanks. Subway's back to order. We're gonna take up item 14, juvenile probation. This is for specialized foster care, room and board Medicaid funding. Who's doing it? Good morning.
Good morning. Ally Banister for the record, representing juvenile probation.
Yep.
Today, we're just requesting that the board allow us to receive this grant from state funding. The purpose of this grant is to fund room and board, and it's primarily used for the shelter and food for therapeutic group homes that are Medicaid-funded. We would, it's funded primarily through DCFS, Division of Child and Family Services, and the Nevada State Juvenile Justice Programs Office. It's a yearly grant that we receive, and it's based on school population, and that's how it's allocated to our department. With these funds, the juvenile probation department would not be able to access this type of level of care for youth who are needed, this programming and structure. The cost to our department, if we have a kid in that program for 365 days a year, would be $43 per day, per youth. So, just doing the math, if we had three kids in a therapeutic group home for an entire year, that would spend up the entire grant with the amount that we're paying. That's it.
Okay, very good. Well-presented. Public comment? Why wouldn't we want to do this? There's no local match required.
Exactly, Mayor.
We wouldn't be very, okay. Subway sir.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. I, I'm all in favor of this, but, I mean, does it really help to have this amount of money, or do you need more funding? I mean, how many children actually go through this? Or how many are in backlog? Or how many can we not help?
Well, I think that it definitely helps the department, the amount of money that we are getting. We use it primarily for two different programs, one being the Hand Up Homes Program in Reno, which is a sex offender-specific treatment program, and then another one being in Armegosa Valley, which is the Northwest Academy. It's a boarding prep school. We're able to send, like I said, three, three per year, but in Armegosa Valley, they really, they work really well with us. I think last year, we had 17 youth from our department, serving a total of 200, or 2,675 bed days there. So they were really helpful in, you know, not charging us the full amount for $43 per day.
Thank you.
Anything else? Motion's in order. Subway's ready about.
I move to approve the Carson City Juvenile Probation Department to receive $47,434.52 in state funds from the State Juvenile Justice Programs Office for specialized foster care room and board Medicaid funding.
Second. Motion and second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Let's take up item 15. Stanley Convergent Security Solutions.
Good morning. This is Sherry Russell, representing the Purchasing Department. This is a joiner contract with the State Purchasing Department, 1415-214. This is, this graphic panel is part of the capital improvement plan that the board already approved during the budget. It is, was budgeted for $52,000, so there should be just enough money in there to cover it. It's not going to cover any of the options, they're not gonna do that, they're only gonna do the main request, and I assume Ally's here for questions.
Anybody having questions? Public comment? Anybody? More motions in order. Subway's, Bunkowski, go.
I move to approve contract number 1415-214, a joiner contract for the purchase and installation of equipment and services pursuant to NRS 332.115 subsection 1M from Stanley Convergent Security Solutions, Inc., through State of Nevada, WSCA, NASPO Cooperative Purchasing Organization, in the amount of $51,900, to be funded from the Capital Outlay Detention Control Panel account in the Capital Projects Fund provided in fiscal year 2015-2016 budget.
Second.
Motion, a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Let's take up 15 Bravo, to accept the work completed on contract 1415-063, the John D. Winter Centennial Park ADA improvements. Sherry, you want to take us?
And this is just a final payment for $5,774.01 on that contract. The budget was $115,480.50, and we spent $1,015,480.25. So again, just under budget.
Very good. We got a couple of questions up here before. Subway's Bunkowski, then Subway's about.
On change order, there was an additional 3,495 square feet of sidewalk added to this project. Can you just kind of go through that and determine how that was added on and for what reason?
So when this, when this project was bid, there was four bid alternates. We accepted the one bid alternate for additional fencing, two of the other bid alternates covered in total the three, almost 3,500 square foot of concrete. Since this was a 100% reimbursement grant that the parks got, once we started, they made us aware, say, we want to make sure we spend all that, so we worked with the contractor. When we found out we weren't gonna have any additional issues, and actually, we're able to get two additional alternates built for, originally, the bid amount was about $17,000 and change, and it came in, we were able to do it for the, what was it, $10,485. Does that make sense?
Public comment, anybody? Board, we ready? Subway's ready about.
I move to accept the work is completed, to accept the contract summary as presented, and to approve the release of final payment in the amount of $5,774.01 for contract number 1415-063, titled John D. Winter Centennial Park ADA Improvements to VNC Construction, Inc.
Second. Motion, second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, carried unanimously. Thank you very much, folks. Okay. Let's take up the finance issues on the second reading of the refinance issues. We'll take up 16A.
Good morning. Mayor, for the record, Nick Providenti, Finance Director, and with me, I have Nancy Paulson, the Deputy Finance Director, and Ryan Henry from Sherman &amp; Howard, representing us as bond counsel. Again, 16A is the second reading on bill number 109, authorizing the Carson City Nevada General Obligation Capital Improvement Refunding Bonds Series 2015C. So if there's any questions.
Any changes or any questions from the first reading?
None, none, Mayor.
Subway's Bunkowski. Ready?
Ordinance number?
Public comment, anybody? Sorry. Public comment?
2015-8.
No, thanks.
I move to adopt bill number 109 on second reading, ordinance number 2015-8, an ordinance authorizing the issuance by the city of its Carson City, Nevada, general obligation, limited tax, capital improvement refunding bonds additionally secured by pledged revenue, series 2015C, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of the city, ratifying action previously taken towards issuing the proposed bonds and affecting the purpose of their issuance, providing other matters relating thereto.
Second.
Motion, and a couple seconds in discussion, on discussion, I think it's important to put on the record that our bond rating agencies have all... on the record that our bond rating agencies have all kept our bond rating as is, which is a good thing for what we're doing here today. Okay, on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, carried unanimous. Okay, let's take up second reading on the highway revenue bond ordinance, 2015 highway revenue bond ordinance. Any changes from the first reading?
None, Mayor.
Public comment? Board?
I move to adopt bill number 110 on second reading, ordinance number 2015-9, an ordinance designated as the 2015 Highway Revenue Bond Ordinance, authorizing the issuance by Carson City of its fully registered Carson City, Nevada, Highway Revenue Motor Vehicle Fuel Tax Refunding Bonds Series 2015, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of the city, providing the form, terms, and conditions of the bonds, and other details in connection therewith, and providing the effective date hereof.
Motion, and a couple seconds on the, motion and second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, carried unanimous. Let's take up the final one on second reading. This is for the general obligation limited tax sewer and refunding bonds, series 2015 Bravo. Any changes from the first reading?
No, Mayor, none.
Public comment, anybody? These are all savings, folks, so that's why we're moving pretty fast, so. Board, supervisor Blunkowski.
I move to adopt bill number 111 on second reading, ordinance number 2015-10, an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of Carson City, Nevada, providing for the issuance of general obligation limited tax sewer and refunding bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues, series 2015B, providing the form, terms, and conditions thereof, and covenants related to the payment of said bonds, and providing other matters relating thereto.
Motion and second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, carried unanimous. Okay, let's take up the condition of the funds, that's D. Everybody had a chance to look at the statement, Mr. Providenti's statement of receipts and expenditures. Public comment? Anybody? Board?
Make the motion.
Motions and order.
I move to accept the report on the condition of each fund in the Treasury and the statements of receipts and expenditures through July 7, 2015, for NRS 251.030 and NRS 354.290.
Motion, second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, carried unanimous. Okay, let's take up Echo, this is the Grants Program Coordinator, movement of position. Who's doing it? Ms. Paulson, you gonna do this?
Nancy Paulson, Deputy Finance Director. This is to approve the reclass of the Grants Program Coordinator position to a Grants Administrator position, and approve moving the position from the Community Development Department to the Finance Department. This position currently manages the CDBG program, and they will continue to do work on this grant program, and they'll also take on additional duties to include working with departments to identify grant funding needs, and research and maintain information on available federal, state, local, and private funding sources, and they will update and maintain the city's grant policies and procedures. They'll research new grant guidance and compliance requirements, and provide training and be a resource for city departments.
Nancy, the person that fills this position, do you know if they will be researching grant opportunities by request of department heads, or will they be self-guided? Will they just be out looking at basically researching all available grant funding that they can find, and then contact department heads to let them know that this funding could be available?
I believe that they'll probably be researching, you know, they'll take input from departments and also be researching on their own to try to find grants for the different departments.
My comment is just to Brad's comment, and perhaps in the job description of this, that should be stated, so that it's very clear that they are researching additional grants besides the requests from other departments, just so that we're not missing monies out there that could be available to the city for, for use.
Okay. We'll take a look at that job description.
Supervisor Shirk, then supervisor Bagwell.
Thank you for answering all my questions in email. Appreciate it. The person who holds this position is...
Janice Keeler.
And she'll just be moving up, is that correct?
Correct.
To the new title, I meant.
Right.
Correct. And would this position now be moved over to the Finance Department, and you'll be, the Finance Department will be overseeing this position from, it's moving from the Community Development Department, correct?
Yes.
Is there, could you tell us the reasons for the Finance Department for overseeing this position rather than Community Development?
One of the things, I think that was recommended by the Moss-Adams study, the internal control study that they did, is for it to be in the Finance Department. The Finance Department's also in charge, responsible for disclosing all the federal grants in the statement, or the schedule of expenditures of federal rewards, awards in the annual CAFER, and in order to determine that we're receiving all that necessary information, we really need the grants to come through the Finance Department. And we also reconcile all the grants at year-end, and we're responsible for coordinating the annual single audit with the external auditors.
Thank you. And departments would get a hold of Janice for grant opportunities, and she would be the one moving forward on the grant. They would just kind of be the liaison for her to tell her where to look? Is that kind of the procedure we're gonna have?
That's correct, and I think she'll also do some research as far as what grants are out there.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to discuss the position in and of itself, and my concern is, unless I'm misunderstanding something here, is the position going to do all that it does now? No duties are gonna be split and transferred out of the existing position? My, my, I'll cut to the chase what my concern is. Does this person not have 100% job now, and how are you gonna add on the reconciling of all the reports and everything else that's occurring? So, I'm just wondering, timing-wise, how we're actually gonna accomplish these new, new goals and activities?
Let me start. Community Development Director, Lee Plamel. So, Janice is coming, the, the position is leaving my department, and yes, of course, she has 100% job duties now, but we would be transferring all of her job duties except for the CDBG grant, would be transferred to somebody else in my department, so it's gonna go to Ava, and it's gonna put, put more on her. But, so, we're, we're not sending any other duties over to Finance except any, the grants, grant-related items.
What I'm trying to get at is, what's our expectation? Is it that we now will receive grant funding that we currently have not been receiving? Is this the beginning of creating a grant office in the Finance Department? Do you see more positions being needed? I'm just trying to get the whole picture of where we're going with grants, because I don't think one position can do all that you're recommending here, and so, do we anticipate more impact or more staffing?
There could be possibly more hourly help in the future, you know, administrative help. Right now, she'll be focusing on compliance with, you know, the grants that we currently have. There's a lot of changes that are happening in the next few years with grant requirements, and I think we really need someone to oversee that, and then also look into the city receiving other grants that we don't currently have.
Well, I think we're moving in the right direction. I just don't want to mislead anyone that this position will have sufficient time to do all the grant overseeing and compliance areas, and still be able to write grants and then monitor the grants. And so, we have people out in the field currently inside the departments. You don't anticipate them not continuing to write grants and look for grants? That, that activity would still occur in the field?
Yes, that would still occur in the field, and she would just be a resource to those different program administrators in the field.
Let me take up the city manager here. Go, Nick.
Yeah, if, if I could, supervisor Bagwell, to build on with what Nancy just said, this is gonna be the start. We, we've gotta be able to create, and more importantly, to align the grant oversight, the grant compliance, and not only the grant application and the research. I think properly to align it with Finance is what we're doing here. I do anticipate being able to provide additional hourly temp help to this particular position, and as we move forward, as revenues recover in the future, potentially, this could be the Grant Office, the beginning of the Grant Office within the city. So, I don't want to oversell it, but I don't want to undersell the impact of this position either. It was recommended not only by the efficiency study, but this has also been a position where the city has had findings in terms of compliance. So, again, to align the function under the Finance Director, I think is the right place to do it. It'll, it will provide not only the, an additional resource to other city departments, but it'll give the Finance Director additional oversight citywide. So, we do anticipate being able to get additional grant funding that we currently don't have, and we'll also have greater accountability for the grants that we do have.
Supervisor Shirk, then supervisor Blunkowski.
Janice is, in her position presently, is working with other department heads on what they procure as a grant versus what she's doing. I mean, she has inner workings with the department heads now on, on grants?
Only related to the CDBG grant program.
So, when she moves into this new position, then there will be a connection between her position, should, when she moves up, to those individuals and department heads who are looking at grants. I mean, they won't be going after the same identical grants from two different avenues. I mean, they'll be coordinating how we obtain these grants in the future.
Yes, that's correct.
And I do want to mention, you did, I asked for how much granting was achieved in 2014 and 13, and the city received $7 million in federal and $666,000 in state funds, so that's a large amount of money, and it's, it's well, I think this position will really help the city obtain more granting, so I'm all in favor of this.
You know, I'm usually pretty skeptical of requests for additional personnel, but in this particular case, I think this, we can safely classify this under low-hanging fruit. We have two issues that a grant coordinator can help us with. First is the liability on compliance issues with current grants, because if we are found to be out of compliance, we risk having to pay that grant money back. We don't want to do that, because by the time that happens, we've already spent the money. The second thing is, in this particular position, it's a wash if they only generate $7,200 a year in additional grants. My guess is they're gonna far exceed that, and it sounds like we may be looking at additional personnel costs in community development, and potentially, future personnel costs in a potential grant department. But again, when I look at this, the city is getting a good deal if we only break even, which is a minimal cost to us considering the fact, as Jim said, that we got $7.6 million in grant funds last year. So, to me, this is, I just can't see why we wouldn't do this.
I just want to add, from a historical standpoint, that this was a position that did exist, and Heidi left, and she got taken up to UNR to handle their grants up there, and so, it's been much needed for quite some time, and so, I'm in strong support of this issue.
Also, it's not an additional FTE. The position in the community development will go away.
I'm sure it will be back.
Okay, anybody else? I got two lights up here, we done? Public comment? Hearing none. Board, we ready? Supervisor Abad.
I move to approve the reclassification of a Grants Program Coordinator, CCEA 41/P1 position, to a Grants Administrator P2 position, and approve moving the position from the Community Development Department to the Finance Department.
Second.
Motion, supervisor Abad, and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, carried unanimous. Okay. Now, while Ms. Paulson's there, you want to take up, we'll take up 17 Alpha. This is discussion from the city manager regarding the position of the Controller pursuant to our charter section 3.073. Mr. City Manager, you want to take us?
Mr. Mayor, and members of the board, per the city charter, you're required to appoint the Controller. Typically, that position has also been the Finance Director for the city. My recommendation for the position, and I am, and I am very confident in her abilities, and I think you know her well, she's sitting in front of you, I would, I would recommend you appoint Nancy Paulson to that position. I intend to appoint Nancy to be the Finance Director upon Nick Providenti's retirement. Nancy's been around the city a long time. She came here initially as an auditor, so from a financial point of view, Nancy is not only the detail person that knows where all the bodies are buried, so to speak, but she interfaces directly, and I think this is important for you, with each one of the department directors. Nancy has the confidence of each one of them. They are universally behind her, her nomination to be the Controller and the new Finance Director. I think she'll serve you well. She has the highest, not only in terms of professional competence, but in, but in integrity as well, and I cannot recommend her position highly enough to you.
Public comment? Anybody? Board? Motions and orders, supervisor Blunkowski.
I move to confirm the appointment of Nancy Paulson to the position of Controller pursuant to the Carson City Charter, chapter 3.073, effective August 4, 2015.
Motion, and a couple seconds on the discussion. I think, you mind if I call you, move good news from Nick to good news Nancy?
That's better than some of the other names.
Talking to Nick during the break. Okay. All right. We'll call you good news and bad news, bad news Nick. All right. On the motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, carried unanimous. Thanks, Nancy, and go do good work for us. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Afford to working with you.
You think we can get through this next item by 11:30?
Yeah, we're gonna give it a try. I mean, we got 11:30 hard, hard time, but let's take up, actually, if it's okay with the board, let's take up 17 Charlie, that's the city manager, the payment of bills. Anybody got any questions with that? Anybody? Public comments on that?
One second.
You bet. Go.
Gotta move to it.
Okay.
The only question I had, and it was answered, but I just wanted to clarify, is on the, looking for it, Carson now add, the payments are being made by the Visitors Bureau, but the city took over processing the payment. It is not the city paying it. It's still the Visitors Bureau, correct?
Correct.
That's what I'm saying. The city is not paying for it. Carson Visitors Bureau is paying for it, we're just processing the payments.
Correct.
Correct? Thank you.
Further discussion? Motions and order? Supervisor Abad.
I move to ratify the approval of bills and other requests for payments by the city manager for the period of June 9, 2015 through July 6, 2015.
Motion, and second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, carried unanimous. Okay, let's take up 17 Bravo. This is the policies and procedures for the city boards, commissions, and committees for possible action to direct the staff regarding the revisions. I want to see, I don't know what all the issues are here, but let's see how we go here, if we might have to take up the issues, Sari Autumn, to come to vote on, but let's try and be judicious in our time. If we can't make it, we can't. So, who wants to start? Go, supervisor Blunkowski.
All right. Turn to page three, or page five, three of the document five of the package, vacancies to be advertised. We now have a term limit policy, and so, in the last line, it says, currently says, "Prior to the time of an incumbent's term expires, he or she will be notified and given the opportunity to indicate his or her desire to be reappointed." That would suggest that we add the words "if appropriate" somewhere in that line, so if somebody has been termed out, then we don't need to call them.
Do you recall, you mind if we change that to "if eligible"?
That's fine.
Anybody have any questions with that? Okay. We'll just see how this goes. Okay.
Okay, on page six of the pa- is the last paragraph of the page, same subject, if we can add subverbage that basically says the same thing, "if eligible" or "subject to the provisions of the city's term limits policy."
What would that be again?
The last paragraph of page six, the next page.
Can I comment on that section, though?
Absolutely.
I don't really even think that one's necessary, because in the other section, it says, "If you want to reapply, you have to do an application." So is it a letter or an application? And I think it's already covered in another section, so I don't think this is necessary at all.
So are you suggesting deleting that?
Uh huh.
Incumbent may reapply?
Yeah.
I have no objection to that either.
Right. Just delete it.
Okay. On the next page, page seven of the package, under Criteria for Appointment B, this discussion came up the last time we discussed the board policies. If somebody has committed a crime, been convicted, and served their sentence, should they continue to be restricted from being able to apply for an appointment? And I'm just throwing that out there, because it was brought up last time, and it was fairly contentious. So I just think that's an item we may want to discuss. Or not.
I don't hear any appetite, but we'll see where it goes.
All right. If there's nobody that wants to discuss it, and move on to item C, under the same criteria for appointment. This came up recently at the Airport Authority, says persons that have a contract for services and/or goods with the city are not eligible for appointment to city boards, committees, or commissions unless the intent of the committee so requires it or it is otherwise provided by law. And there was discussion on whether or not that meant any contract with any portion of the city, or whether it was a contract with that specific board, commission, or committee that they were applying for. So I think that we need to clarify that language.
Right.
And again, we can open that for discussion.
Yeah, and that identifies an issue that internally, we've kind of identified, you know, our, my office's interpretation of state law is that that restriction applies when there is a contract with that specific board, commission, or committee. That is not necessarily consistent with the language that exists here, so it's just really a policy decision of the board, is which way you want to go. Do you want to be consistent with state law, or do you want to go over and above state law?
Well, I prefer to be, to go with state law.
Jason, along that tack, under legal counsel, I'd like to add an additional bullet point, that being that input about eligibility of applicants be added to what legal counsel does, and perhaps the legal counsel for the various boards or commissions is the one that provides the input, so that we're not in a position of being up here on the board not knowing, actually, if someone should have even been interviewed for this process.
Sure, and that is an issue that we've identified as being sort of a gap, in terms of what the procedures that are prescribed here. There is nobody necessarily assigned to review those qualifications for the position at issue and provide information to the board. I think we need a little more guidance than that, and I'll ask for that guidance here. Just indicate that my intention is to take all these suggestions, incorporate them into a doc, into a revision to this, and present it to the board, insofar as there is consensus. If there is not consensus about which way the board wants to go today, then we would present to the board alternative language that you can look at on all these issues. But let me offer an observation on making legal counsel the entity that's responsible to look at those qualifications. My only concern with that is, we may be in a position, under certain circumstances, where we're offering the board legal advice as to whether certain criteria meets the qualifications for a particular position. For instance, in the, just the instance that we had a few weeks ago, the Airport Authority requires that the manufactured position be within three miles of the airport. It's not clear in the statute whether that means that they operate a business within three miles, that they identify a business address within three miles, or whether they reside within three miles. So we might be in a position where we're offering you legal guidance on what that means. So I don't want to be both the judge and the jury on that, in terms of us looking at it, determining if we believe they're qualified, and then offering you advice on that. So I don't know that you necessarily need to designate a particular person for that or anything, but if, but I agree that somebody needs to be responsible to go through and vet those qualifications. I just wonder if it's more appropriate with the City Manager or the City Manager's designee to do that factual sort of investigation behind that, present the information to the board, and then free us up to do the legal advice part of it.
It seems like it would be more of an administrative task, to me. And then, of course, Adriana, you or Jason can always step in if there is a legal matter that we need to be advised on at the meeting.
And what I'm getting the sense is, I mean, the other question, too, is, what do we do with that information? For instance, if Nick or his designee or whoever determines that a person is not qualified based on the administrative task of gathering this information, what do they do then? Do they go back to the applicant and say, "You're not qualified for this, we're not going to present you to the board"? Do they just present that information to the board and allow the board to make that decision? So that's another thing I think we'd want some guidance on.
Well, my thought process is, I hate to embarrass the candidate. So my feeling is that, you know, staff duty or whatever notifies the candidate that actually they don't meet the qualifications based on X, Y, and Z, and so I think that's the more appropriate way. That's my whole point in this. I feel very bad for the candidates that come before us that take the time out to appear and apply, when in fact, they don't meet the qualifications, and I don't feel that that's right.
I would agree with Karen on that. I really don't want to see them up here if they're not going to qualify.
I concur with that.
Okay. Since you're on, go. Keep going, and then we'll go.
Page eight, under term limits. Right now, it says, "Consistent with the goal of equal opportunity of Bob, unless otherwise specifically waived by the Board of Supervisors, it is the general policy that appointment term limit shall be 12 years as follows." I don't know that we want that to be arbitrary. I think our policy should be, they either apply or they don't apply. Maybe there's an argument against that. Maybe we do want the ability in special circumstances to be able to waive it, but I do think that that creates a liability for us that can be seen as arbitrary, so I'd just like to put that out there for discussion.
I actually agree with Brad there, and the exception would be, we had no other applicant, which is covered in our commission policy, so I think we already built in the appropriate exception. So I concur, this should not, this should be, it's 12 years. And then I'd also like to clarify, when does the 12 years start? Because we have an applicant on one this afternoon, and just reading this, it would start from an appointment period, so I'm just, 12 years from what point? From 2012 or from your next appointment? And I think we need to clarify that. When does it start counting?
Fortunately for you, we did that. So Adriana, you want to?
Yes, and basically, with regard, it was specific to the applicant for today, and in that case, because this procedure was adopted in 2012, everything in it, then, is prospective, so it would apply to that individually prospective. So in that case, the term would begin in 2012, so it would be 12 years from that date. And then every other person would then be 12 years from their appointment after this date.
And you're saying that because when they adopted this, is what the board discussed, that it would be that way?
Right, so you can't go retroactively and apply the 12 years to somebody when this didn't exist.
Okay. Bottom of page eight, multiple appointments. No, non-elected person shall be nominated or confirmed by the Board of Supervisors to serve on more than one board committee or commission at any one time. We're not necessarily following that. It seems like, again, we've kind of taken an arbitrary stance on that, so I would like to see that clarified one way or the other. Is it going to be one or two, or are we not going to put a limit on it? I just think we need to clarify it, since we're not necessarily following it in every circumstance.
And on that, too, there's also an ambiguity in terms of, shall not be nominated or confirmed by the Board of Supervisors, and I think there's confusion as to whether, if a person wants to apply for a second board, whether they have to resign from their existing board in the first place to even be qualified, or whether or not they can wait and see if they actually get appointed to do that. So I don't, we can draft up alternatives for that, or if there's a consensus, we can go one of those two ways.
My sense is you've got pretty much of a consensus, I'd think.
Sorry, I missed it. What's our consensus on that one?
Resign to apply, is that the consensus, or resign?
Resign to apply is what I thought, but, you know, if we want to discuss it further, it's not.
Let's discuss multiple appointment first.
Sure.
So I find it different from a committee in which they apply versus the committee that I have the authority to make an appointment. So I'd like to clarify that, that I think the appointments that the Board of Supervisors makes can be any candidate, and just because they serve on another board, it shouldn't stop me from nominating them or making them resign. So so long as the ones that are board-appointed applicants can be multiples, then I'm okay with the designation of resigning the other one. I just want to clarify that.
And I agree with that, and I think that is in the policy. It might be better, more clarified. We may try to do that, but I believe that's the, that's how I read the second sentence in that.
Yeah, I would concur.
Could it be a board appoint, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I was just saying, I would concur with that, too.
If we appoint somebody to a board, can we appoint that same person to numerous boards? Or is they limited to one appointment by a board member?
The way that this second sentence reads is, it's unlimited. If you wanted to appoint one person to all the individual appointments you have, you could do that.
Moving on to page 12, the top paragraph, meeting location and time. I'm just going to jump in there, because I know Jim's going to bring this up. So, "The Board of Supervisors through the City Manager will designate meeting locations for city boards, committees, and commissions to the greatest extent possible. The meetings will be held at a convenient time and location that has the capacity for televising the meeting." My question is, are there enough days on the calendar to hold those meetings here in the Sierra Room? Because I don't believe that there are. So do we have multiple locations where meetings can be televised? Or logistically, what do we have the ability to do or not do, so that we don't discuss this forever, talking about trying to have all meetings here, if we can't logistically do that?
Can I add something to that as well? My concern is, and I will just use the CBB as an example, we have one board member who's younger that pays for daycare, so the convenient time for that person to be able to attend the meeting is that it start at 4 o'clock. It works better in terms of, so convenience is dependent upon committee to committee, and members that are on that committee, can they somehow determine timeframe? Or does it have to be totally dictated from the board as to when and where?
Well, there is some flexibility built into the language of this, because it is through the discretion of the City Manager, but just as a general observation, you know, every time, every word that you put into this policy is a word that potentially attorneys can fight about. So when you talk about this designating meeting locations to the greatest extent possible, you're talking about a situation where if a party was aggrieved by something an advisory board did, and they wanted to bring an action because they don't think the discretion was exercised appropriately to the greatest extents possible, that's something that an attorney can fight about. So I understand the objective there, I just wonder if the objective is better served by simply a direction to the City Manager. We want these advisory boards to be as accessible as possible, with the understanding that, you know, the membership is the membership, and they need to be in a position where they can vote, but that's, that's the, I'll just say this, if I was writing this policy from scratch, and you know Larry Werner and Randy Mon spent, obviously, a great deal of time on it, there were multiple meetings, long meetings, and they put a great deal of time on it, I just wonder if a more effective policy would be much, much shorter, and just provide this general direction to the City Manager. Having said that, it's not my intent to lawyer this thing up and start from scratch. I mean, we've got provisions in here that, for the most part, are working, and with some tweaking, hopefully, the whole thing can work. But I just make that observation that, you know, everything we put in here is potential to conflict with other provisions, to be hard to interpret, enforce, things like that, so, but I can work with the concerns you have.
Let's go. Jim, you got any?
Well, my concern is not making it easy for a person who serves on a board to have a babysitter. I understand that, but my, I think this board would also agree that these meetings are held for the benefit of the citizens. Maybe they don't attend, maybe they do, but that's not, that's not open for discussion either. Citizens can attend, but they can't attend meetings that is held at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and they're working. They don't have the opportunity. Whether citizens attend or not, that's their choice, but we should, as a government entity, provide the opportunity to our citizens to attend these meetings, and you can't do that at 4 o'clock. The Cultural Commission just had a meeting at 9 o'clock. We have meetings that start arbitrarily at different times, depending on the persons that sit on that committee. I don't think that's the way it should be done. And if this room is not available, then we have to have a second room, the Bonanza Room, where the BAC could put cameras in there, or bring somebody over with a camera, that could be televised there. So I think the idea of a convenient time is not for the members sitting on that board or commission. The convenient time is for the citizens who elected us to appoint those persons to hold those meetings, and allow the citizens the opportunity to attend. So I think we need to look at a timeframe that's convenient for citizens to attend, not for persons sitting on the committees to attend.
I'd just like to respond to that. Those persons are citizens as well, and it deletes their ability to apply. For some of our younger people that we want to have involved on our boards, commissions, and committees, childcare ends at 6 o'clock, and so it deletes their opportunity to participate as members of this community. So I feel that the committees know what time is best for them to get together, and our recent charrettes on design are a classic example, better attended during the day, lesser attended in the evening. So, you know, with that being said, I think that, you know, to get a majority of the community to participate, they book that into their day, and if it's important to them, they'll be here. So I don't think having every meeting at 6 o'clock is necessarily a good timeframe. And I don't want to eliminate a sector of our community that's important to be involved in this community, since we'll be long gone when they're still living in this community. I think that we need to keep a timeframes flexible.
I agree with that statement, I think, because I think that, you know, if you start saying you've got to do it at night, one, I haven't seen any empirical evidence, empirical evidence, that meetings at night have any greater participation than meetings during the day. I mean, I understand we talk about it, but what I've just heard is, you know, it goes both ways. And the second thing is, I think that every time we do these things at night, we've got to staff them, and nobody's looking at the overtime costs that we've got. And, you know, that's a cost, and I do think that, you know, democracy is a participatory function, and I agree with, you know, if people are concerned about something that's going before a committee, they're going to be there, and that's the way it should be. I mean, we should make it easy for them to be there, and be open, comply with the open meeting law, but I think that we ought to be able to have, you know, the flexibility of when those meetings are held. I mean, because it goes both ways, it's public and who's on the board, because as Sue Fajer about said, there, the board members are citizens, too. I mean, so that's my two cents on it, but.
Yeah, and I think I would agree with Karen and Bob on this, although evening meetings might be better for some people who have day jobs, there are other people who work swing shift, or people with small children that can't make it, so you're always going to have that balance. And I am very concerned about the personnel cost. And I am very concerned about the personnel cost to the city to have every meeting in the evening after staff has already worked a full day. So I think, you know, my preference would be to just punt this back to the City Mayor, as Jason recommended.
The City Manager.
I don't want it.
The City Mayor? Did I say the City Mayor?
I don't want it.
Did I say the City Mayor? I meant the City Manager. I meant the City Manager. And, you know, make him the fall guy.
I think what we're all interested here is making sure that the public has access to information, and that they can provide us information, because all of these boards are about reviewing particular items and making recommendations to us. So the piece in here that maybe would meet both spectrums of this is to ensure they're televised. So I think that might be important, that the public that couldn't attend, because I think you're right, you'll have people that a six o'clock meeting can't attend because they're on this shift, or somebody can't do this one, but that they have the opportunity to actually watch that board or commission on the television at a later date that is convenient to their working schedules. So I kind of want to split this down the middle and say, I'm very interested in the public having access to information, and the televising of the meeting, no matter what time it is, is probably the most important item in this. So if we were to punt that back, Jim's idea of using the Bonanza Room and putting a video camera in there or something, so I think the televising of some of the meetings that we haven't been doing is a worthy distinction in this.
I don't know what the technical requirements are. I mean, I certainly have no particular difficulty with televising, but I would... I think we all have to understand, too, that, you know, we have certain jurisdictions that we can talk about, who we can talk to. I mean, I've had people come to the VNT Board and say, you've got to do it at five o'clock. Well, the VNT Board is a separate legally-created board, as is the CVB, the Visitors Bureau, as is the TRPA. Those boards you have no control over. I mean, on the advisory boards, yeah, you've got it, but on the legislative-created ones or the regulatory boards that are separately identified by statute, those boards operate on their own. So what we're talking about here is the advisory boards. And Woody, I would kind of say, you know, I agree with what you're saying, but can't let you get by with saying the legal, you know, lawyer to lawyer, is that, you know, these are advisory boards. They don't make a final decision. And so I'm not certain that the nuance goes to there, but your counsel is certainly appreciated and wise as usual, so, okay? And I follow it, okay? All right. All right.
I'm not done yet.
I didn't think you were.
The ACC TV contract is going to be coming back to us in the near future, so maybe we can incorporate some of these comments into that item when it comes back to us. My next item's on page 15, top paragraph, Staff Reports to Board of Supervisors. Many times in the past, we have had requests for committee chairs or vice chairs to come present to the board rather than staff. Just like to see if we can maybe tighten up this language here, so that we can provide for... Because I believe the language now says that staff's going to present. I'd like to have the ability that if a committee chair or vice chair wants to present along with staff, that they should have that ability to do so, so that we can hear directly from the committee members as well. And then we have provisions or procedures for establishing a new board, committee, or commission, but we don't have procedures for eliminating a board, committee, or commission. So we may want to add a paragraph so that we're clear on what that process is, because when you get to the appendices, the Carson Nugget Development Advisory Committee was actually disbanded maybe a year and a half, two years ago, but it's still showing on here. So that should be deleted from Appendix A and Appendix B. And maybe if we had a procedure for eliminating or disbanding boards, committees, or commissions, then we would have something in writing that would help us clean up our records, and that's all I had.
Good idea, okay. All right, who's got further changes?
I've got...
Go.
And Jason, something else I'd like to consider, and that is perhaps, if it's possible, based on the... Under the headings under which these committees exist, if they can be combined, and I know Supervisor Bagwell has some ideas, too, on this. And my thoughts were that perhaps audit and debt management, which are both under finance, can be combined, and maybe they don't always meet on a monthly basis, maybe it's quarterly, but however that works. And then that the Carson River Advisory and Open Space meet, because information... Both of their entities, you know, relate to one another, and the information that each provides could be invaluable to the other, so it just makes more sense. And from a staffing standpoint, it makes more sense, too. And then the other thought was that Parks and Rec and the Shade Tree Council meet.
Okay. Jim. Supervisor, go.
Well, most of it's already been covered. Great points, too. I would like to know, on page 14, 15, and 16, this policy and so forth, does it apply to every list that we have here, and in particular, the Carson City Library Board of Trustees? Does this procedure manual apply to them as well?
It is designed to apply to all of them, except as it conflicts with something like the mayor alluded to, state law, like the Planning Commission and RTC and those things that are created by state law, would be subject to state law. This policy would govern, except in the event of a conflict with state law. I don't know the Board of Trustees, the source of it. I don't know if it was created pursuant to the charter provision, allowing the... This board to create the boards and commissions, or I don't know the source of it, so I can't answer your question.
Do we know? Does this policy cover the library?
I would have to do an analysis on that, and to make sure that they comply with what this... I mean, this has... I'm trying to find the place where it has who it applies to, and it illustrates application. So it says that this policy doesn't apply to the Carson City Board of Supervisors, Carson City Liquor Entertainment Board, Board of Health Redevelopment, nor any non-city board committee or commission created by state or federal law, or which member of the Board of Supervisors sits, or where the Carson City Board of Supervisors is required to appoint a portion of the membership, but not a majority of the membership. So I'd have to take a look at each one of those points, look at the creation of the Board of Trustees, and then analyze it. So I can't give you an answer, I'd have to actually analyze it.
I wasn't... I used that as an example, I wasn't picking on the library, but we have a lot of boards listed here, and I just want to know what applies, does it applicable to each person that's... Each group that is listed on page 14, 15, and 16? So maybe we can eliminate some of these if it doesn't apply, I understand that. Page 12, it says legal counsel, and serves as legal counsel to boards, committees, and commissions created by the Board of Supervisors. And that's would go back to all of those listed on page 14, 15, and 16?
That's, you know, what this says. The one example that I know that is different than that is the Airport Authority that you serve on is obviously represented by Steve Takeds. The Airport Authority is created by its own special legislation, which allows that to happen, and so that's why that portion of it is different. But as a general rule, I think we represent all the other entities that are identified on here, with the exception of things like TRPA and things of that nature. But we're legal counsel to all the other entities that I'm aware of.
I want to go back to the board in itself. This policy, when applicants come forward, I know I'm probably rehashing a little bit, but this would be going through city staff if they're qualified or not. Am I understanding that correctly from our earlier discussion? Applications or applicants will be screened by the city staff if they're qualified? Is that... Would that be correct?
That's my understanding of the direction I've been given, to draft something that allows that to happen.
Okay. On... I'll rethink this. Thank you, I'm done.
Well, I got... We're just about on time here, but we'll see if we can make it. Supervisor Bagwell, okay?
I'll be quick. We need to, in the listings, add the newly-created Utility Finance Oversight Committee, that's missing. And then I'd also like, in Appendix A, if you could add another column that would put the actual statutory reference or the resolution number, so that if anyone wants to apply for anything, they can see the actual resolution that created it and understand that, or the law. And then we already, I think, talked about deleting those that are no longer... So I don't think we have the Carson City Television Commission. I don't think we have that one any longer, so if we can just review all of those, I would appreciate that. And then there was... That's fine. Bob, I have one more. Okay. I want to... This is more procedural, and it applies to even today, but that every candidate fills out an applicant... A complete application, whether they are reapplying or a new applicant, because since our line of questioning is the same for each applicant, for new board members, they don't know what the qualifications were of that person if a complete application is not submitted in the packets. So I think it should be the same policy throughout, no matter what. And then also to consider a time limit on late material, maybe the Tuesday before a meeting, so that we're not getting bombarded all the way up until, just a thought. And then require staff to update the websites for the various committees. And that's it.
You know, on the late exhibit stuff, I, too, get concerned about, you know, having documents come at the last minute. On the other hand, you know, I think we need to, one, state that as an aspirational goal, but not as a lead... Because I think that at the end of the day, you know, we meet every two weeks, that's a... And things can move really quickly, and so that's my sense, anyway. Supervisor, go.
I concur on the late material. I think if it's late material, it can come, you know, whenever it comes, if it's pertinent to that. I would also like to see our city websites updated, as Karen mentioned, because the list is completely wrong on who serves, and the other thing is, if we can get the televised link on our city website of these meetings, because if you want to go see them, it's such a... Well, it's a real pain to get to these. I mean, this should be on our city website, you click it, you can watch it from there. The way we have to go about it is just, it's not really good. I mean, for technology today, it's terrible, so... And I'm just going to read. Now, the changes and discussion we had here today, this board policy will come back to us, is that correct, for final approval?
Right. I'm going to draft the revisions based on the conversations today.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do you need a motion?
I don't think so. I've got a couple other areas of concern, and whatever your pleasure is, Mayor, I can address them here.
How long?
Okay.
I don't want to cut you off, but I mean, let's see where it goes, Woody.
Okay. On the lobbying section, on page eight of the policy, is not entirely consistent with the legislative policy that was adopted earlier this year. I don't know if the board has an appetite to just eliminate the lobbying portion of this, or what you want me to do with that.
Consistent with state law.
Well...
They can lobby.
This is the lobbying stuff. I think it should be consistent with the policy that we adopted. I mean, that's the most recent pronouncement we've got, right?
Right.
I mean, why can't we put in here, then, in this document, then, that... Make a reference to that policy, not quote it in here, but make a reference to that policy.
Very well, I can do that. And then the other one is, that we run into, is the creation of subcommittees by committees. Is that something you want to allow in here? Do you want to disallow it? Do you want to allow it, but subject to the approval of the Board of Supervisors? Or how do we want to go on that? Or I can present all the options if you'd like to tackle it, then.
Well, maybe on that one, you present the options. I don't know that... I haven't had a lot of time to think through all the ramifications of that, so maybe if you present us a bunch of options, we can take a look at that.
Very well, that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else? We've got enough to give him? That's good. Well done.
He was worried about us.
I was worried. I was worried. Okay. Thanks, Mr. DA. Madam Assistant DA, thank you. Okay. Now, let's take up item 18. Nick, you want to bring us through this one, please?
Mr. Mayor, I will. I would recommend we take up the two applicants in the order that are listed in your agenda item. So that'll be Jesse will come up first. If you could just give me a moment, so I can take the other applicant out of the room.
Why don't you tell us about what's... I mean, just so the record, so people are clear, how many openings do we have? I know it's in the staff summary, but just for the record, put it out there.
Right. This is an opening... This is one opening to appoint either a hotel or a motel operator to the Carson City Visitors Bureau. We have one reapplication from Sandra Nigel, and we have a new application.
You have a...
Oh, I'm sorry. I had that reversed. We have a reappointment from Jesse Dehammy, and a new application from Sandra Nigel.
Okay. Hi. Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning.
And Board of Supervisors.
How you doing this morning?
Doing quite well.
Why don't you give us a little bit of why you want to reapply, and how you think the Visitors Bureau is doing, and what do you think is on tap for it? Kind of just a general overview.
Okay. First, why I'm reapplying. I'm on the board... I've been on the board for four years now, two terms, and last year, our board made a very important decision of changing the administration, which is bringing on Mr. Joel Dunn, and also some new members in the team. And as you're aware, Carson City has changed, hospitality has changed, and I was just listening to Mr. Shurik about technology. Technology is changing more than we can digest at this moment, and we needed a fresh face, and also expertise, because Mr. Dunn came from Parks and Rec. He was hugely involved in bringing sports tourism to our town. And sports tourism, apart from the government business, leisure in the summer, and other demand generators, sport tourism has been very big for Carson. You know, you name it, Comstock, the two tournaments in April, Fast Pitch, you know, we have... This week, there's a major tournament all over the area, Triple Crown, which is USA Nationals, and everybody's sold out. And he has generated an interest from those entities, and they want to come to Carson. And also, the rebranding, the rebranding has been huge, which was done by this new officials, and also, we are more engaged in terms of how we promote Carson in print media, where we position ourselves in social media, and how we create an interest as Carson City as destination, which is promoting outdoor recreation with... Facebook has been huge. Visit Carson City page has more likes than any time I've seen. And I think now the tourist who's sitting in Southern California, or on the East Coast, or maybe on anywhere on the planet, knows more about Carson City than ever before, and they want to come and stay here. Before, it used to be they were staying in Tahoe or Reno, and then they will make a day trip. Now we are seeing more two-night stays in Carson, and then they go to Virginia City, Tahoe, and Reno. And a lot of our guests like the small-town atmosphere. It's, you know, it's easy to get anywhere, we have good restaurants, we have good shopping now, and also, the new freeway is gonna help when we complete it, how everybody gets access to our cities. I'm excited. Why I'm, want to come back on the board? I think we have just started, I think. We are in initial stages of this new Carson City, where we position ourselves, and we have some challenges. The biggest challenge that, as community, as hospitality, we have seen is our government per diem has gone down, whereas our neighboring communities have, actually, it has gone up in Reno, and they have two rates in Reno. So, I've been working with Joel, I've been working with Congressman Mark Amada's office to see why, because down the road, our cost of doing business is going to go up. Minimum wage is going up. Obamacare is gonna be implemented soon to every business. So, if, if per diem is going up in Reno and Las Vegas, why Carson City, we are seeing it going the other way. So, that's one. Second, again, the, the biggest challenge that we are seeing in this industry is, the guest is becoming very important. By that I mean, guest satisfaction has reached a new level. There's more amenities, and there's more the guest demand. So, to do that, we, as a board, has to work out where we deliver to our friends at our hotel motels, how we satisfy the guests, because guest satisfaction is gonna bring more business to Carson. There's TripAdvisor, there's Yelp, there's Google, there's individual branding sites, there's, every brand has its own internal guest satisfaction program, there's Facebook. Like, everything has changed, so, and, and to satisfy today's guests, we, as operators, have to do a better job, because it's not always about the product, it's more about the service now. The product is just part of the equation.
Thank you. Who wants to go? Go.
Hi, Jesse. I've got a few questions for you. One, the CBB has made significant changes in marketing strategies, as you're well aware, this past year, and how has that affected occupancy rates at your property, and what would you like to see additionally? And then I have one other question of you.
Occupancy rates. What I have seen is, in, in the last 12 to 18 months, and in the, in the second term since Jonathan came over, we, as a board, are more proactive. We want to, we are planning already for year 2016. We are looking at our lean seasons more, so that, because that has been our biggest challenge, is filling rooms June through September is not a problem ever. But we want to make sure what additional tournaments, events, what can we bring? For example, let's take Nevada Day, for example. Nevada Day has been a, an event for a long, long time, but it has not generated overnight stays what we expected. So last year, we had that event here, at Mills Park, so we saw a huge increase on the Friday night stay. I've not seen that in 15 years. So, to, to bring events at the right time, and to avoid overlapping of events, because last year, let's say, let's talk about hot August nights, we had two, three major events at the same time. There was a big event at high school, so, and hot August nights itself is a big event. So we want to make sure that we segregate them, like, we put them where we're not, we're not conflicting them with the same. Occupancies have changed, because as a board, and as an operators, the new operators, I think, which I consider are the not top five, but the other eight hotels, they have started to increase their rates, and when you increase your rate, it helps everybody. It helps in room tax revenues, it helps in other five hotels to manage rates, but occupancy simply has been driven by new events, a better economy, and a better consumer confidence. I think everybody has played a part in it, but yeah, as a board, I think the, as a CBB, as a team, Joel, Chris, everybody out there is doing a great job. They're, they're attending more trade shows, they buying the van, relocating our office. You know, that was a big issue in the past, that we didn't have good visibility on Carson Street, so our guests didn't know where CBB is. Now, we are right on the main street, we have a new branding, we have, we sell more collateral than any time, so there's more interest, so that will bring more occupancies into Carson City, and more new guests, rather than repeat visitors.
And just, what are your thoughts, since the arts are an economic driver, on increasing room tax to fund public art, or the arts program? Just want to know what you think.
Well, we have to first do an internal review, if, if art is that important driver, how many additional room nights it's gonna bring? If we add tax, because here's, I'm, I'm gonna go back, you know, 10 years, you know, we thought VNT is gonna bring a lot of room tax dollars, and you all know, it didn't happen. Yes, it did, but the amount of tax we are collecting and, and our investment. And, and I know a lot of you might not agree with what I say, but we all work on a ROI basis, return on investment, in everything we do daily. And if, if, in that review, if we are able to come up with a revenue growth, because we have to look at the bigger picture, it's not only room tax dollars, it's sales tax, too. Every person that comes into Carson City, they're gonna get gas, they're gonna get food, they're gonna do some shopping, and they're gonna do probably some recreational, you know, maybe go to the river, go fishing, maybe rent a bike and go up the hill, or something. So, yes, we have to look at the bigger picture, not only room tax dollars, but sales tax dollars, is how it's gonna help our economy, because we all know gaming revenues are going down. So we have to find other alternatives to bring money to this city. So, I, I, I'm for it, as long as we prove within, within our group that it's worth it, yeah, then we'll go for it. But, but at the same time, we want to have a good conversation with every operator in town, because the last thing we want to do is not engage every party. Thank you.
Thank you. Great answer.
Hi, Jesse. I have a hard question and a harder question for you. I'll let you pick which one you want. You want the hard one or the harder one? All right. I knew you would pick that. How diverse should the Convention and Visitors Bureau get when looking at bringing tourism to Carson City? Should their focus be primarily on heads in beds, or should it be the overall general tourism effect to Carson City?
Well, you're, I pretty much answered your question in the last thing, but I'll still answer it again. I think, as member of the board, it's my obligation to make sure that we, we meet our goals, short-term, long-term, and, you know, some of them are financial goals. But as a citizen of Carson City for a long time, it's my duty to make sure that whatever we do here, when we meet once a month, or when we have our meetings within our board or with the CBB, that we make every effort to promote tourism, which helps the local economy. And it's, it's been my dream to build a restaurant over there, by, by the hotel, to do that, because I felt there's a need. And I think tourism helps every business that's in Carson City in, in a different manner, like, you know, the restaurants, and restaurants probably get the most benefit. But diversity is that hotels, restaurants, all these businesses that cater to the person who comes into town, or a family that comes into town, work together, so that we actually work for Carson City and not for the board. And that's been, how it's been our objective for the board, and that's personally my objective, to make sure, maybe it, maybe it was, if it was a corridor project, or maybe it was, you know, something that's not directly related to hospitality, I, I want to make sure that we benefit the community and not the, the room tax. But what happens is, when we do everything here for room tax, it actually benefits them. So, it's, it's very closely related. I hope I answered your question.
Hi. Thank you for applying, we really appreciate it. Jesse, if you could wave your wand, what is the one thing that you think you could do on the Visitors Bureau to increase tourism?
Okay. One thing, I'll tell you a little bit about my history, because that's very important to answer your question. I'm an electrical engineer by profession. 19 years ago, I moved to this town, because I drove somebody's moving truck. I didn't have a job, I didn't have a business. I moved to United States in 95, and I drove the truck in April of 96 to here, from Sacramento. I did not have any experience in hospitality, zero. I, I had issues with language, because I just literally moved here. So, me and my family, we bought a small motel called Carson City Inn, June 24th, 96. And I worked 16 hours a day at the front desk, and I used to live upstairs on the third floor in that motel, for four years. During the time, during that four-year term, I used to clean rooms, I used to plunge toilets, I fixed locks, I had to evict some guests, sometimes, part of the business, I cleaned parking lot, I picked cigarettes. I did everything that a small motel operator would do. From there, we, we, our family had some good luck, thank God, and hard work, that we were able to slowly step up and buy other motels. So what brings with me is experience. I pretty much know every little bit part of the business, be it the property management systems, be it, be the franchise relations, be it the guest satisfaction, be it which mattress should I buy, be it where, where the furniture is. And the biggest thing that I have learned in my experience is how to please a guest, because I think that's the hardest part. How to make the guest walk happy when they leave, and give them an experience, not a motel room, everybody can do a motel room, give them an experience where they feel, oh, it was worth it. It was worth it to come to the hotel, it was worth it to come to the city, because everybody at the hotel, and this is what I train, like, be friendly and tell them what's good in Carson City, because a lot of people forget that. And I want to generate interest in my team, I do that at a hotel, I do it at here, and a numbers guy. And, you know, Joel has helped me put together a great monthly report, where we can track how we are doing. We compare numbers with local, national, we get numbers from Carson Valley, I get numbers from Reno, because I have a sister property, and we want to make sure where we are today and where we're heading. We want to make sure we are better than Reno, we're better than Tahoe, in terms of where we position ourselves. So, I think to answer your question, it's my experience in hospitality, it's my experience in budgeting, which, which I love to do, and it's just my passion. I think also my passion that I, I love to work, and I love to be part of a team which has higher goals.
Good afternoon, Jesse. There are a lot of local events here within the community. How does the Visitors Bureau work with so many local events to, to get it out to the public, so people will come here? How do you, how do you collectively work with so many events in, in Carson?
I think the, the highest opportunity, or where we have actually used that opportunity from the CBB side, has been website. Because I think delivering information, right information at the right time to our community is very important. So that's one part, because locals sometimes will not go to visitcarsoncity.com. For every local event, CBB also prints collateral that we use at businesses to promote those local events. Also, participation, you know, our, we have a, a new van which, which attracts attention. So, we, we're looking ways where we can use that to promote CBB and interest of locals into the events. But I think also the event organizers have to work with CBB, you know, okay, this is how we should do. I think it's, it's not a, a, a single entity that will make it successful, I think it's working as a team, where the event organizers are directly in contact, and I'm saying 90, 120 days in advance, so we can plan it and make, you know, where's the best opportunity we have to promote the event, so that we get maximum participation. I think, but primarily, the CBB, I think, website, collateral, and also discussing events here during our board meetings, because this is televised live, so we discuss what's coming up in the next 30, 60 days, and make sure, you know, we do everything, and sometimes other board members have, you know, views about it, okay, you know, this is, this works. So we, we, we plan that, that way. And also, the big banner in downtown, that, that helps a lot, because every local goes through Carson Street, you know, once, once in a while, and they look, they look for that.
Are you okay, board? Thank you, Jesse. I can't help but say, you know, and Supervisor, I about asked you about funding the Cultural Commission, I'll never forget what your father said when we asked, when I asked him, how do you fund the improvements to the corridors, and he politely, but politically stayed back, that's your decision. Thanks, Jesse. All right. You're welcome to sit, you know the drill, you're welcome to sit around and watch, good Apple Watch, by the way. Hi, Sandra. How's Hampton doing today?
Fantastic.
Very good, that's what we like to hear. Everything going all right? Sorry to keep you waiting out there.
Oh, no, no, no. That's perfectly fine.
Okay. Why don't you, you know, the, one, let me say on behalf of all of us, thanks for, thanks for applying. It's a big deal. We place a lot of trust in what the appointments to these boards, and the operation of the boards. Second, we generally try and ask the same questions of each of the applicants, so that there's nobody gets a leg up, and that's kind of what we do today. And so I usually start off by just asking, you know, tell us a little bit about yourself, why do you want to do this, and what do you think you could add to the Visitors Bureau?
Well, I've been in the hospitality industry for 17 years. Five of it have been here in Carson City, 12 of it have been in various big cities in the Seattle area. So I have seen big towns. This town, it's a little different, I'm not used to the small-town feel, but I absolutely love it over anything else and anywhere else I've ever worked. I have gone to school to go and be a paralegal. I haven't quite completed that yet, because I'm just finding that the hospitality industry has been something that I am truly passionate about. I've tried to leave the hospitality industry a few times, keep coming back, because it seems to always be a draw, something that I'm very, very willing to be in for probably the duration or the rest of my life.
Okay. Jim, you want to go, start?
Good afternoon. There's a lot of local events within the community. How could... How can the Visitors Bureau work together and promote these local events?
I feel just basically getting the word out. I know at our hotel, we generally go and we put all of the local events. And a lot of that we pull from the Visitors Bureau website. We create a list for the guests, post it at the front desk. So as they're checking in, we do talk to them about the events and invite them to go see the events. Especially with the summertime and a lot of them are bringing their families, there's a lot of family activities that they can participate in rather than just going to Tahoe or to Reno. You know, we try to keep them within Carson City.
Morning.
Morning.
If you could wave a wand, what is the one thing you would do to improve tourism in Carson City?
I would like to be able to see more historical things that the guests like to see. I know a lot of them ask questions about historical place to see. You know, we get families that travel particularly during the summer that are going to different state capitals all across the United States. And they're always asking, well, what can we do? Where can we go? What can we see within Carson City? And seeing as it's the state capital, I've been very big on trying to educate my front desk, particularly the ones that are not from this area or have lived here for very long, to say, you need to learn the historical difference. You need to understand what the Blue Line tour is. You need to know where the governor's mansion is. Because I'll tell you, I usually will pop quiz them during an interview process and half of them don't even know where the governor's mansion is. So that's just been my thing is just making sure we understand the historical significance of Carson City.
Hi, Sandra.
Hi.
My question is, how diverse should the Convention and Visitors Bureau get when looking at bringing tourism to Carson City? Should their focus be primarily on heads in beds? Or should it be the overall tourism effect on Carson City?
I think it should be the overall effect on the tourism of Carson City. Like I said, we're a small historical town and that is a huge draw for the guests as well as the sports tournaments that we have. I've only been in the position as a general manager technically for almost two years. I was never as involved in what goes on in town. Probably for the first year, I've been spending the last year just really being more involved, going to the board meetings and really just trying to work with the Visitors Bureau on what's going on. What can the hotel do? How can we participate?
Hi, Sandra.
Hi.
I've got a couple of questions for you. You've been a regular attendee of the C V B meetings. And you've seen that we've made significant changes in our marketing strategies. How has that affected occupancy at your property? And what would you suggest that the C V B consider doing additionally to promote Carson City? So that's the first question.
I knew you were going to be tough. From what I've seen in the time that I've been here, it has been a dramatic increase in occupancy. Especially going into this year, we have seen a lot of people looking to stay in Carson City and just not being able to have enough rooms to accommodate a lot of those guests. We're very big on making sure that we do our hotel call-arounds, that we're checking everybody else's occupancy. If we're sold out, we are more than willing to recommend different hotels that guests can call and stay at. I have also had the front desk go and do tours, site tours at the other hotels just so they understand that if they're recommending somebody to a hotel, for whatever reason, that they actually understand and can describe that property to that guest. I think that the Visitors Bureau over the last couple of years has done a great job in branding Carson City and, I should say, rebranding Carson City and really bringing us up to the times of where we need to be. I've seen other state capitals and I think right now we are actually doing a very, very good job.
Now, my other question, probably the harder. Knowing that the arts are an economic driver, what are your thoughts, and there's no right or wrong answer, what are your thoughts on increasing room tax to fund public art?
I am very big on trying to support local. When guests are asking places to go, restaurants to go to, we always want to refer local. I believe in supporting the local businesses. I send people, if they want to go do a little bit of shopping, I always send them downtown, try out the little shops that are down there, go to the little restaurants that are down there. Increasing taxes, it's always a really tricky question. I know for my owner, he would not want that. But I just feel that if it's going to go towards supporting your local people, if it's the local arts, if it's anything, museums, then I am definitely on board with that. Thank you.
Your boss might have heard that.
Well, so that your boss, yeah, so that your boss knows, let me just say, you know, Hampton is well-served by you. And you're very well-spoken. So if your boss is listening, he can, that's for me, okay?
Thank you.
On behalf of all of us here, thanks for applying. And these are the toughest decisions we have because we've got two highly qualified first-class operators here. So you're welcome to join us while we make this decision.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sandra. All right. All right, let's see if, somebody want to put a name out and then we'll see where we go?
You go first.
As Bob said, this is difficult because we have two highly qualified candidates. I'd really like to be able to appoint you both. But since I can't, Jesse gets the slight edge because of his experience on the C V B already. So what I would say to you, Sandra, if Jesse ends up getting appointed, if you can't have a seat on the board, please keep your seat at the table because I think that your input is critical to the C V B.
Yeah. Very well said. And I wish I could appoint both of you. Jesse's institutional knowledge is invaluable and he's right. We're just beginning. So I want to keep that going. And his thoughts on my last question that was asked today was very indicative of his thought process on the board. And that is being inclusive of all properties and all decision-making, making sure that everybody has a seat at the table. And so my vote is going to be cast for Jesse. But Sandra, I want you to keep your place at the table and to reapply. Thank you.
You know, as I look in the audience, I see both of you sitting next to Joel. So it says that you get along really well. I think that speaks well for Joel as well. My vote also goes to Jesse. Sandra, I think you're just right there, just a little nudge and you would have been in there. But I think you're both excellent candidates. I don't see how any board member could, it's very difficult to pick either one of you. But it's great to see you all three sit together.
Now, you and I are irrelevant.
Irrelevant.
It's good to be irrelevant in S H life. It's good to be irrelevant. Okay. All right. We'll take a motion to appoint Jesse Dami to a two-year term to the Visitors Bureau.
I move to appoint Jesse Dami to the Hotel Motel Industry Position on the Carson City Visitors Bureau for two-year terms that expire on July of 2017.
Motion, second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried unanimous. Thanks. Thanks again, Sandra. Thanks, Jesse. Thanks for what you guys do for making a better place for us to get visitors and move forward. Thanks. Okay. All right, Board. We're doing pretty well here. Let's see. We're now on item 19, non-action items. Any board members got anything? Jim, go.
I'll go back to, we talked about the board and commissions and so forth, the applications. This is a great example. Jesse filled out one application. Sandra's filling out a different application. So it should be standard, just going back to that agenda item we had on board policies. I had a discussion with the mayor, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, about the appointment to the animal shelter oversight. That is not a board appointment. The animal shelter in Nevada Humane Society asked Lori Bagwell to sit on that. She's not sitting on it as a board member, but as a citizen. I just wanted to clarify that from an earlier meeting. Also, I do want to clarify something on the watering of the downtown flower baskets. They are, the city is being reimbursed, and Karen can correct me if I'm wrong, through the greenhouse, correct? Okay.
I'll clarify.
Thank you.
The greenhouse project pays Parks and Rec $6,000 to pay for the watering position. And this year, instead of a private individual, they've chosen to hire their own employees to water the baskets. So that's what's gone on. So it's a paid-for position by the nonprofit.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And that, those monies are provided by those sponsors of all the baskets, so.
And they look nice, too, so. And it quit raining when she had her concert, too, so. She's got some pull. I would like to just touch base on, from the agenda from last board meeting, two letters that were in there, one from the sheriff's office, which he says, "With the approval of the Schultz Ranch 424 residence units, will have amplified effect on how this agency can provide law enforcement services in an effective and timely manner." And I want to tie that to the fire department, who in their letter dated May 15th, it says, the last paragraph, "In summary, the fire department is beyond its capacity to provide fire and EMS protection to the community." I think, and I brought this up before, I think this is something that staff should look at so we don't go year after year and this getting progressively worse. We have both law enforcement and the fire department saying they're, you know, at the peak of providing services to the community. It may be something we should look at in the future and discuss. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. And I think, you know, it's the same concept as getting ahead of the ball on water infrastructure. I mean, sewer. I mean, because, you know, one's personnel, one's infrastructure. But if you don't stay ahead of the game, and they both cost money, you run into trouble. So, okay, anything else?
First of all, I just want to thank the community for coming out in strong support of the greenhouse project for the concert. It was a sold-out, very successful event. And just as a highlight, we now have people coming in from out of state to attend this event. So it is putting heads in beds, which is great.
Anybody else? Well, in case you didn't read about it in the Nevada appeal, which I'm sure that you did because we all read the Nevada appeal, July 31st, we are going to lay and authenticate the keel of the U S N S Carson City Joint High-Speed Vessel 7. I'll be back there to do that, which is an honor for our community. And it's also a historical day, it will be, when the commission, when the christening comes around because the first commanding officer of the new Carson City is a commander, is Captain Bob Wiley, who is a 23, 26-year resident of our community. Wife works at the hospital as a nurse. So we're getting a double bang for our recognition. Not only getting a United States naval ship named after us, but the first commanding officer comes, is one of our very own. So from Carson City, we all need to be very proud of that happening. Anything else to have to come? If not, why don't we, let's be in adjournment until 1:30.